Great, welcome everyone. Welcome. This is our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November 14th, 2017. Welcome. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall for our viewing audience. Thanks for being here. And for the record, we do have a quorum. All council members are present and we'll call the meeting to order. And first off, if we'll start with a moment of silence, we have some things to reflect on for those. We had Veterans Day last Saturday. We had a tragic loss in Sutherland Springs, Texas, and just most recently here today in Northern California. Alright, thank you. Our Pledge of Allegiance, Ikane, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just for all.
So we do have speaker slips in the back and if you can submit your speaker slips up to Dana or Joe at the very end here, he can pass them forward. We'll be taking public comment on all items. We have public comment at the beginning of the meeting for items not on the agenda. Then we'll have public comment for consent. For those of you who can't stay for any items later on in the agenda, you can, if you just please mark on your speaker slip, you can come out and speak at the beginning during the general public comment period. And with that, we want to move down into our recognition and swearing in of Scott Collins, our city manager, who's going to ask for the council to go down to the podium and we'll celebrate today. Alright Scott, this is exciting. We're happy to be here, alright. So if you want to just raise your right hand and repeat after me and you can fill in all the gaps. You ready? Okay. "I, Scott Collins, do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"I, Scott Collins, do solemnly swear and affirm..."
"...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...to the same..."
"...to the same..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully..."
"...and that I will well and faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties..."
"...discharge the duties..."
"...upon which I'm about to enter..."
"...upon which I'm about to enter."
Scott, congratulations. Thanks, we're happy to have you.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor and council members. Just a few comments. First off, it's an absolute honor to serve you, council members and the Morro Bay community as the new city manager. I intend to work hard to earn the respect and trust of my staff, our partners, and most importantly, the community. I will treasure every single moment as your city manager, the good, the bad, the challenging, and the fun moments. As everybody here in this room knows, and I'm discovering, Morro Bay is a very special place. And I take the role of city manager extremely seriously. The community deserves a city that represents its values, those values of democracy, engagement, civility, transparency, and also importantly, efficiency and effectiveness. I believe the city is in great shape and I hope that I can honor council's past and present, our partners and community members here tonight and out in Morro Bay by working even harder to make it better. I encourage community members to reach out to me, to share your thoughts and ideas, your concerns and criticisms, and your solutions. We will succeed by working together, hand in hand. Thank you very much.
Alright folks, we're going to take a short recess. There's a sheet cake over there. We'll take a short recess and then we'll come back and get started on the meeting. Okay, welcome back. Hope everybody had the cake and all that went well. Great night to celebrate, thanks. And next on the agenda, we have closed session report. Mr. Bononi?
Thank you, Mayor. There were a couple of items that were on the closed session agenda and they were all discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. And then council members' reports and announcements, and we'll start with Red to the left.
Thank you. I want to recognize tonight one of Morro Bay's super citizens, John Elliott, for the many ways that he contributes to our city. John came to Morro Bay a few years ago without a job, but he had ambition and business experience and he bought Mike's Barber Shop. And he's transformed that into a full-time, two-chair shop that's open seven days a week. He employs two full-time employees there. And then shortly after that, he purchased another barber shop in North Morro Bay, which he named Tiny Mike's. It has three more chairs, it's open for six days a week. So I want to thank John for adding five full-time jobs to Morro Bay. I think that's a great achievement. Another thing that John has done was to initiate the downtown trick-or-treat Halloween celebration three years ago. We just had our fourth annual and it's grown every year. It's a great success. It's one of our city's major events. John also is on the Board of Directors for the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce and he's their treasurer. And one more thing is, he is a generous donor to a lot of our high school and youth-oriented activities all around town. And I just, I really want to thank John for all the things that he does. Gail and I had the opportunity Sunday to attend the grand opening of the Sweet Springs Preserve by the Morro Coast Audubon Society. They took in additional 10 acres, I think, added to the original preserve. They constructed a fully ADA compliant path that leads down to the water and a viewing area that really gives a different view of Morro Bay. It's fun to go over there and I encourage people to go there. I will do office hours this coming Saturday at Sun 'n Buns from 9:00 until 10:00, and then I'll follow that up with a business walk. And I invite anyone who has a concern about anything or suggestion for improvement, come on down and talk to me. Thanks.
Great, Red, thanks. Matt?
John?
Good evening and happy holiday season. This is the kickoff, when you get cake like this, of the carbohydrate crave that you soon will have as you celebrate the holidays. I wanted to report to the council and the community, I sit on the Air Pollution Control District Board representing the city of Morro Bay. For those of us that live in the northern part of the county, we often don't hear maybe much about South County and the issues there. And when you think about this county, you really think about clean air. However, in South County, in the dunes area, we have one of the most significant air quality problems. In fact, at least eight times this year, South County has been the worst air quality in the nation. Not the state, but the nation. And that has to do with the dunes and the size of the sand particles that are moving around, not only because of the wind, but also scientifically, it's been proven, because of the writing that occurs on the dunes. So for the last 10 years, and again, I'm new to this board, for the last year I've sat on the board, there has been a discussion about this South County issue and the air quality problem that we have there. And there hasn't been much in the way of anything but studies done to try to demonstrate the fact that it does exist, there are causes, and there are people suffering from a health standpoint in South County. So the reason I bring it up is, the air quality CEO recently issued a notice of violation, which has really never occurred in this county before, to state parks for air quality violations with regard to the operation of the park. That has resulted in the calling out of a special master to review the problem. And now it has gone to a hearing board, which in the last 10 years has never really been utilized in this county because of the lack of air quality problems. That hearing board met yesterday and they are hearing public testimony with regard to these issues. And the reason I bring it up, I wanted to let the council know that not only is it very impactful with regard to the quality of life for a number of our citizens in the county on the south side, but it has the potential for affecting tourism. Once you get known as having some of the worst air quality in the state and nation, that presents issues. And so, the hearing board heard a full day's testimony yesterday. They will reconvene and hear the rest of testimony and then public comment. And hopefully will be able to begin to move a timeline forward for mitigation of the issues. That's really been the problem. The problem has been not so much the lack of identification of an issue, but the lack of the ability to move forward and mitigate the issues. And it doesn't mean closing the park completely, in my opinion. It doesn't mean doing away with dunes riding, but it has to do with mitigation that has really involves natural vegetation and the allowance of that to come back in certain areas to minimize the damage that's occurring. So when you see the warning, caution when you're down in that area. It is bad air. If you have COPD, asthma, or any bronchial disease, you should avoid the area. But for the council, I just wanted you to be aware that I am representing you and trying to get this issue to the forefront and some mitigation started for this county. And so, thank you.
Thanks, John. Marla?
Good evening, everyone. I do have one thing to report here. I am the representative on the county's Housing Services Oversight Council. And I don't know if you noticed in the paper on Saturday, there was an article that gave the results of the most recent point-in-time survey of homeless in our county. And the good news is that the number of homeless has been steadily declining. They do this survey every two years, so they did it in 2013, 2015, 2017, and each successive year, there have been fewer people counted in the survey. There were actually 1,125 homeless people counted in the county, and there were 36 in Morro Bay. The only problem with it is that there may be an undercount because it was raining heavily when they did the survey. But for those of you who may be interested and want to see it, it's a very interesting survey and it gives a very good background of the problem in our county. I would recommend that you go, it's online at slowcounty.ca.gov, and it's the 2017 Homeless Census and Survey. So that, I just wanted to report on, that's my liaison role. And then I just want to make a slight announcement. For all of you bird lovers out there, the Bird Festival, which isn't coming up until Martin Luther King Weekend, which is January 12th through the 15th, the reason I'm talking about it today is that registration just opened. And for those of you who know anything about it, it fills up rapidly. So if you're at all interested, there's 138 events, it goes on for four days, and it's a premier event here in Morro Bay. Go to morrbaybirdfestival.org and you can register for it. So, thanks.
Thanks, Marla. I just wanted to say, Scott, thanks for your comments for tonight as we celebrated your swearing in. As a council, we have a duty as well to serve and to serve with, in a civil manner and working with staff in a way, and that's a commitment from us as well. So I just wanted to express those comments and just welcome you as well. And then Jen, your first night in our city council meeting, just want to say welcome. Thanks, we're glad to have you. This is a transition for us. And finally, in that transition, sadly, Ikane, just wanted to say thank you for your service. I know this may be your last meeting, I think I said that last time, but today it may be your last meeting. You came here and helped us and served the city of Morro Bay, and I just want to say thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, with that, and we do have city manager reports and announcements, and I was just going to look to Scott.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor and council members. I'll try to be really brief. So I had a great first week and a half so far, meeting with staff, community members, partners, council. As I mentioned earlier tonight, this is a community that pays attention, that cares, is involved, and that's why I'm here. My focus for the first few months is really just figuring out, you know, the lay of the land and doing that through listening. So I invite people to contact me. Focus also is on the budget, filling very key staff positions that are vacant at this time, and also some big projects that are going on at this time. I wanted to give the community and council an update on the community pool that, you know, is located at the high school. As everybody in this room probably knows, this was a big, big push by Morro Bay and the school district to get Measure D approved, to bring community pool to the community. It's a tremendous asset, but we are starting to get questions about when it's actually opened, because it is open in some respects, but not fully. You know, and again, the community was very key to this being passed and it's something they treasure and will be a long-term asset for everybody. So we're working very closely with the high school and with the school district to understand the hours, when it will be open, the types of programming that will be available, the days, et cetera. And so we're working through those details as we speak. And in addition, you know, we did get some funding from Los Osos Group, the South Bay Community Pool Association. It was a considerable donation of about $45,000 and change, and we will honor that support moving forward. So as soon as we have a better idea about the official opening date, the days of use hours, and programming, we'll bring that back to the public. And we anticipate that being very soon, and we definitely appreciate the community's patience on this. Lastly, I just wanted to bring attention to the council and the community, a training that was conducted yesterday by The Rock, led by our fire team. It's the search and rescue team at the county, partnering agencies, worked with the CHP to do helicopter lifts. It's very important water rescue training that was conducted from about 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the county search and rescue team is a joint effort from multiple local fire agencies to provide technical and tactical experience for the multiple emergency events that occur within our county. The search and rescue team has assisted our emergency crews within the city multiple times for trench, rope, and water rescues. And currently, our captain, Gaily, and engineer Simpson are assigned to that team. Just highlighting this because this is a great example of the training that we provide to our staff and also the partnerships with allied agencies that improve our rescue capacity during emergency incidents in our community. Thank you.
Okay, great. And with that, that concludes our announcements and reports at this time. And we've got about 30 minutes worth of speaker slips, so I'll... Larry Newland from the Morro Bay Maritime Museum was going to start us off on the business spot, as I understand, Larry, is that correct? Okay. And then I'll call folks up from the business, from the speaker slips, thanks.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff. I am Larry Newland, the president of the Morro Bay Maritime Museum Group. And I'm happy to say that as of this afternoon, I learned that we got our building permit. So hats off to Building Department and Planning Department and Rob, you guys, thanks for shepherding that through. It's been a long, kind of up and down, little things here and there, but they worked expeditiously and got that through. So, we'll be staging down there tomorrow with material and lumber and generator, so you might see something going up this week. The actual build of the building should be pretty quick, barring weather and unforeseen things, so we're very excited. After my involvement since 1993 with a project, I'm happy to finally see something solid go up at 1210 in Barcadaro, so that's the address officially, of the Morro Bay Maritime Museum and Park. And part of that project also includes, on the eastern portion, a Native American heritage area, we're working with a Salinian tribe in the county to develop something there too. So it's going to be a pretty interesting, dynamic place, but all systems go on that. We also have a new logo, so we've been kind of upping our branding and marketing. I'll show this for the group. So thanks to John O'Brien at Art Ministry, we work closely with him. We've got the new logo, and this will be on the building as well. And we have a new website that will be up and running probably in a month or so. So a lot of things happening, not the least of which is wine, but I'm not going to talk about that because somebody else is going to talk about that. So thank you very much and thanks especially to staff. Thank you very much.
Larry, thanks. And with that, Charlie Yates, and then Ann Wyatt.
Hi, good evening. I just want to say thank you to the council, to the building department, everybody worked hard to get this museum. Now, we're still raising funds for this great community. And what we're doing is, we have, the Kelsey family has created the Alma Reserve Zinfandel. And we have about 100 cases that they made for us. It is our fundraiser, and we will be selling that wine at a number of different places, Morro Bay Wine Cellars, Giovanni's tasting it right now, he's ordered some, the Inn at Morro Bay at 60 State Park. And this has been a true labor of love. We got our board together and we did bottling and labeling, and it was a lot of fun. We did tasting and we did rejects. We had some, you know, we had some that just didn't make it. But working with Keith Kelsey and the Kelsey family, who donated the Alma, they ran the Sylvester's Tug Service here for many years. Keith was a board member back in 1993 and 1994, and has rejoined our board. And our board is reinvigorated, especially today, the day we got our permit. So again, thank you. Alma wine's available for sale at those locations, and I want to tell everybody, it makes a great holiday gift. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Ann Wyatt, and then Amy Perry, Amity Perry, Amity, hi.
Good evening, Mayor Irons and council members. I'm Ann Wyatt, and I'm program coordinator for the nonprofit housing organization, Home Share SLO. And in this month of Thanksgiving, I just came out to thank you all tonight and thank your staff, including Mr. Graham, for your assistance with funding our nonprofit program. And I just wanted to report in, and on behalf of our almost 80 client signed up, both housing providers and housing seekers countywide, and on behalf of our board, to let you know that we have made a couple of housing matches here in Morro Bay, and a couple in Los Osos, some with Morro Bay residents who are kind of moving between. And so we'll look forward to sharing more of those stories with you in the spring as you've requested a return visit that's agendized. I know you have several items tonight, so I won't kind of get into details of those client successes. But they're coming along. I wish we could say we've solved the housing challenges of everyone in the community, but we're just making a dent or working our way to meet the needs especially of single senior women who are seeing, we're seeing increasing numbers of, with increasing and different housing challenges from what we've known in the past. So just for anyone in the audience who doesn't know our organization, we are a nonprofit operating countywide that matches home providers, people with an extra room, with home seekers, people looking for a room. And so if anyone knows of anyone who has housing needs that we may be able to help meet, our website is at homeshareslo.org. Again, homeshareslo.org. And right now, we have almost 30 rooms available countywide. We have been very successful at signing up housing providers, and it's just taking us some time to find the right matches or people looking for the rooms. So we have one provider we haven't yet matched up here in Morro Bay. He has a nice room, not too far from the beach. So if anyone's looking for housing, we would certainly encourage you to check out the website or call our office, 215-5474. We'll look forward to sharing more with you in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks very much. Amity Perry? And then Richard Sadowski?
Thank you. I just wanted to let the community know, there's going to be a memorial service for Beverly Abbey on Friday. Many of you may know Sweet Bev from her past work at the Harbor Festival and on many local political campaigns. So if you want to come celebrate her life, it is Friday at Coles Bookstore from 2:00 to 4:00. So that's November 17th, Friday, from 2:00 to 4:00 for Beverly Abbey. Thank you.
Thanks, Amity. Richard Sadowski? And then Carolyn Brinkman?
Richard Sadowski. As a public servant, one of the things that I take very seriously is the duty of care that comes with being a public servant and serving the public as a whole. This council has taken the concept of manage or treat with regards to this sewer plant that was supported by the CC and has applied it with such incompetence that this council stands to changes the very fabric of our community. I'm going to give you some real-life examples. I know this woman bought a place here years ago, before some of you even heard of Morro Bay. And she stands to having to move out because of the sewer bill that she's going to be She's not rich enough to maybe live here anymore. I have a friend of mine, who's a widower, raised his family here. Raised his kids here. He's going to have to reverse mortgages home to pay this extravagant sewer bill while the consultants have been, by this council, opened up the city coffers and have plundered the city coffers with this ridiculous project. I have a friend who's a widower, young woman, single mom, trying to raise her kid in the area where she grew up. Can't afford the rent after this increase is going to go on. This is, this is what's happening to the community. These are the real-life aspects of what you guys are doing and how it's going to affect This project, I don't have to, I've said what I've said about the, you know, regarding this lift station, the land use, we've been canceling meetings, there's no discussion, no public, open discussion on this. We don't, it's like you have these closed-door meetings, it appears, staff makes decisions, and then it goes forward. Disappointing. Even considering this 1 point, whatever million dollars for this lift station is a boondoggle.
And then Barry Brannan?
Good evening, Mayor Irons and council members. My name is Carolyn Brinkman, and I'm a resident... My name is Carolyn Brinkman, and I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Two council meetings ago during public comment, Cindy Hawley, speaking for the Morro Bay Action Team, asked the council to agendize a proposed amendment to the Morro Bay City Ordinance on Finances. We continue to ask you to place that proposed amendment on the council agenda soon, so that the public can hear our concerns. At that meeting, we asked the council to do four things. First, we asked the city council to follow California Government Code 41004, which requires the city finance director to prepare and present to the city council a monthly accounting report showing all receipts, expenditures, disbursements, and fund balances for the preceding month. You heard us on that part of the proposal. Thank you. Councilmember Hennig reported at the last council meeting that monthly accounting reports would be completed, I believe, starting in January, but I can't verify that. That point was reinforced by our new finance director. We are assuming that those reports would be filed with the city council as required by law. However, now we ask the council to respond to our remaining three requests. We also requested that a copy of that detailed monthly accounting report be attached to the agenda for the second city council meeting for that month. We continue to ask council to direct staff to do that. Our point is this: The public needs to see each month how you are spending our money. Third, we ask the council to amend the city ordinance on finances to include these changes. Amending the city ordinance on finances is important, because staff and city council members come and go. New folks need to know that staff prepares these detailed monthly accounting reports, and that those reports are filed with the council and attached to city council meeting agendas. Fourth, we ask the council to put the proposed amendment on a city council meeting agenda so that the public can hear your discussion on the changes we are requesting. That has not been done. We continue to ask the council to agendize our entire proposed amendment so that the public can hear why you do or don't want to make the monthly financial reports available to the public by attaching them to the agenda on the second city council meeting of each month. And the public needs to hear why you would not, would or would not want to change the city ordinance on finances to reflect those actions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Carolyn. Barry Brannon? And then Teri Simons?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Welcome. Barry Brannon, Morro Bay. The recent, and I miscalled it the other day, it's not a water treatment facility, it's a water recycle facility, because I used the letters out there and I got in trouble, so I'm sorry. Anyhow, the recent proposal that went out, that we hired some expensive consultants to ask for, request for qualifications, they were well-written, but they were well-written for huge contractors. For example, one of the things that they're requiring, that anyone that bids on this must have completed two $80 million projects of the similar size before they even be looked at to be qualified. Just to give you some reference, the Santa Paula Plant only cost $62 million. So we have specifications in there that are written so honorous that we really didn't get any little contractors. And to give you an example, I have a sign-in sheet for when they came to register. We have a nice company called Parsons. I think they build bridges and things like that. We have CH2M, one of the other huge contractors. We have Flatiron. We have all the big-name contractors. But if you look at this list, there's no small contractors, because the specifications were written in such a manner, the bonding requirements were excessively high, the requirements, what they had done was excessively high. And it was written by one of the consultants, who basically has been, I think, abusing our checkbook. And that's why we're not going to get a competitive price on our, our work, because we've asked for a gold-plated system and structure. For example, and I've had conversation with email, the plot plan that was presented at the slideshow for these contractors was the old plot plan. Plot plan is the area map of what you're going to build. And it was showing the corporate yard up there. So here, these people come to the meeting, and they get a visual presentation of what we want, the gold plater. And then you're going to go back and say, oh, by the way, we didn't really want to do it that way, we want to do it cheap. They've already got the money in their mind. They know what they're going to bid. You guys wanted a gold plater, we'll build you something smaller, but we won't, and we won't charge you quite as much. So the whole concept of why you bid it doesn't work. I'm really ashamed at the way the bid process was done. I don't think it was properly vetted, and it was put through by the consultants, and I'm, I'm really disappointed in it. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Teri Simons? And then Nancy Castle?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Teri Simons, Morro Bay. Thank you for letting me speak ahead of the agenda item that I'm actually addressing, which is C2, the lift station. I've spoken to you about the lift station aspect of the wastewater treatment plant in the past, and I just, now that we're getting ready to let a contract for $1 million and a half dollars, I've looked at the contract details, timeline, the work projects that are outlined in the contract, and much to my dismay, as excited as I am to see that someone's finally going to take a look at this, there, nowhere in that work project could I find anywhere that there would be a schematic plan, a footprint, and a profile, and an architectural rendering to take to the Coastal Commission to see if they will approve it west of the freeway. I'm very concerned about that. All due respect to Mr. Endersby's A7 item, even he found, after many, many years of working with another agency, that at the last minute, they changed the game on him, and he has to come to you for another $45,000 to hire a consultant to do some additional work. I'm very concerned that we could easily spend another million, million and a half dollars on a lift station design without ever going to the Coastal Commission to see if they'll give it a nod, or if they're going to put extra requirements on a lift station west of the freeway that may or may not be presumed by the engineer that's being hired to design it. That's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Nancy Castle? And then Jennifer Little?
Nancy Castle bringing you a moment of comic relief. I promised I'd wear a fancy turkey hat the other night at the mixer to Mayor Irons, so, you know, I had to come through. I'm here to talk about Thanksgiving. We got the poster on the wall with a big bird. It was drawn by a man named Joshua last year, a decoration for one of the placemats, and I scooped it. It is, again, we're serving as many as show up. We're planning for 600. The Lions Club, the Morro Bay seniors, quite a few just individuals who care deeply and are very thankful to be in Morro Bay have come out to make this happen. We'll be serving on Thanksgiving Day, which is November 23rd, from 1 to 3 p.m. It is free, everybody can come. We will accept donations. We have a little over half the money we need to pull this off. I'm confident everything will work out fine. For people who need a meeting, meal delivered, the very fine Morro Bay police officers and the volunteers will be delivering meals. So if you know of someone who needs a meal, they can call a senior center to get on the list. I have a few large posters in the back that will fill a window if you could have a place to put them, take them, and some smaller ones, and the AGP guys will pick up any that are left behind. And I hope to see you all there, and if anybody wants to sign up for cleanup, I'm taking names. So, thank you immensely.
Thanks, Nancy. Jennifer Little? And then David Nelson?
Good evening, council mayor. Welcome, Mr. Collins. I just wanted to go over a few things that are happening in the next few weeks, because we have a lot coming up. First of all, as Nancy mentioned, the Thanksgiving Day at, for the community dinner, that same day, we have our first tall ship arriving. The Lady Washington will arrive, and it'll be at the subsea docks, and it'll be here till December 12th. They will not be doing tours that day, but they will be open for free tours starting on that Friday, so go on down, take your family, and do a tour. And then immediately following that, starting on December 1st, we have our 12 Days of Winterfest, which a lot of it is new to Morro Bay, and we're really excited about it. And we have Friday on the 1st of December, we have our first ever lighted boat cruise. This is not the official parade, this is just, the waterfront restaurants are sponsoring some boats that'll be out just cruising up and down the waterfront to help with evening business. So that'll be Friday night, and they start at 7 p.m. And we also have that first day, our very first Santa House is being built by Morro Bay Rotary, and it will be here in Morro Bay, and Santa will be in his house, starting on the 1st of December, from 6 to 8 p.m. And that will be on the Embarcadero down by the chessboard. So that'll be, that's a really nice addition for Morro Bay. On Saturday, December 2nd, we have a citywide simultaneous lighting of Christmas trees and crab pot tree that Harbor Department is helping with, so that'll be really nice to see all over town. And then that is the night of our official lighted boat parade. So that'll be nice to come down. Something new for that is we have $1,000 in money that we're paying out for people that win the top lighted boats, and that's just for residential or not commercial boats. So we encourage everybody to bring a boat for the parade. On Sunday, December 3rd, we have our first non-motorized parade. That's a paddle parade during the day, and again, it houses $1,000 in prizes, so we encourage everybody to decorate your kayak or your paddleboard and come out and paddle down the, down the bay with all of us. Our second tall ship arrives on December 5th, which is a Tuesday, that'll be the chieftain, and it'll also be at subsea docks. And then on December 8th, Friday, we have our first ever Santa crawl, and that involves 30 different businesses in Morro Bay, both in downtown on the Embarcadero. And you have to dress like Santa, or dress in Yuletide, and you can do wine tastings up and down Morro Bay. So that'll be really nice to do. And then on Saturday, December 9th, we have a gingerbread house competition at the Inn at Morro Bay. And we also have, out on the sea, the two tall ships will go out, and they'll do battles, so you can make reservations to go out on the boats and, and experience that. On December 10th, we have real snow, just like we did last year at Tylenol's Park. This year, we're going to be doing it in two separate sections to separate the big kids from the little kids and keep everybody safe. And then we also have an elf-on-the-shelf competition and cookie decorating down there, and we're going to have a lot of nonprofits down there serving food and beverages, so come on down. Two last things, Caroline Cops will be on Monday, the 11th, so you can come out with all of our police force and sing. And then on Tuesday, the 12th, you can come say goodbye to Santa, he's going out on the Coast Guard Cutter. That's it.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
David Nelson? And then Judy Brown?
Good evening, David Nelson, here again. I need you people to explain to me why we spent tens of thousands of dollars to have consultants tell us that we couldn't afford to build the wastewater treatment plant. Why didn't that project die? I mean, we were told we can't afford it. Your solution is to take critical parts of it away to make it cheaper. But I've asked you so many times, I didn't send out emails this time, I'm going to just talk to you guys on the record, can you explain to me why this project's still alive? For one thing, I don't even know where this project came from, other than preliminary plans that we voted down as citizens, and it came back to haunt us. You people have been pushing it down our throats for years now, making, changing its name, but why? Why are you doing this? All of you people live here. You're asking us to pay $150 million for a sewer plant that many of these people that are going to talk to you tonight know that you can do it for half of that. Now, why, why don't you explain to us why I'm here again tonight, asking you not to waste another million and a half dollars on a piece of equipment that very well may or may not be needed on a wastewater treatment plant that we, the citizens, decide? Because don't think you're going ahead with this plant. Why are you going to build this pump? I mean, tell me why. I mean, I don't understand. I've been using, asking the same question over and over. You make believe that we're in this loop as citizens. How many times have we been in here on these public meetings where there's nothing but a bunch of ridiculous boards on the wall, pushing us in a direction that you want to take us? We don't want to go there. This room has been packed with people telling you that we didn't want to build this. We spent millions of dollars chasing a plant that the people in this town don't want and can't afford. Now, we had, we paid consultants to tell you that we can't afford it. I don't need to be a consultant to know we can't afford it. So why aren't we getting smart and just have a permit, build, and operate, whatever? Let's get away from trying to build our own plant. The plants are already built. All you got to do is buy the damn thing and put it on the lot and run it. Santa Paul is online. I don't know what your problem is with that. I wish you could tell us why we can't have something that's already designed and something you can modify to any standard that you want. All they are are modules. I can give you names of companies that you can buy these things from. A sewer plant that we need is $3 million. Then you add all the rest of the water filtration. You guys do the right thing, don't spend a million and a half dollars.
Thanks, David. Judy Brown? That's all I have for public comment speaker slips.
Hi, everybody. I'm Judy Brown, live on Alessandra Street in Morro Bay. And I just want to congratulate the Police Department on two things. One, their great bust of all the Bakersfield rip-offs in the Moro Rock parking lot. Good job, guys and girls. And also, you guys did an amazing haunted house. It was scary. I was scared. I'm not kidding. And I went outside, and a little boy came up to me, and he goes, "Did you go through there?" I said, "Yes." He goes, "Was it scary?" And I said, "Yeah." I couldn't talk him into going. So thank you for your hard work on that. It was a really nice community event, and you guys did a wonderful job. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Judy. And with that, that'll conclude our public comment. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And a couple of items that worthy of responding to, the reporting, financial reporting, I'll look for maybe Jen or Scott, if you want to report, respond to that. Have her...
Sure, thank you. As we mentioned before, we are working on gathering information and getting a comprehensive and understandable report available for monthly distribution, and we will have internal discussions and discussions with you on, on the method for distributing those and how you'd like those issued, so.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other questions on that? Jen, what's the timeline on that?
I think we originally did say January, I think that's correct. Hopefully before that, but I would, I would guess January at this point.
And then, Rob, on the RFQ criteria, did you get Mr. Brannon's comments on that?
Sure did. First, I want to say this is the first step in a two, the required two-stage process by the Public Contracts Code. So first, it's prequalification of potential bidders, and then we go through the bid process. We, as, as of yet, have not prepared the project criteria that the, it's under preparation, the project criteria that proposed bidders will be bidding on. This meeting was to talk about where the project's been so far. Yes, we did have an exhibit from our facilities master plan that showed the site for illustrative purposes, but we did talk about our peer review process and our direction from council to compact the site and reduce the footprint of that site. Yes, the project does have required experience. This is estimated at an $89 million project cost for the wharf, and we would like companies with experience building projects of this scope. It includes both the wastewater treatment components and the water recycling components of this project. And we did have some of the larger construction firms in the country there. The labor force that they will bring forward to build this project will largely made up, be made up of San Luis Obispo County residents. They'll bring their core forces with them, but they'll need to hire local They'll bring their core forces with them, but they'll need to hire local labor to construct this facility, including subcontractors. I don't know if you have any further questions or need any further explanation?
There is one more about the lift station and some design criteria that would be important for the Coastal Commission.
Yes. This has been a point of discussion amongst our team with Coastal Commission, making sure that they understand by moving the facility to meet the, the desire for coastal retreat leaves us with a collection system that terminates west of the highway. They, I believe that their staff understands that it is not technically feasible to replumb the entire west side of the city to move a lift station to the east side of the highway. The other alternative is we would have to remove all dischargers from the west side of the highway. That, that's equally as infeasible. The other things that we've talked about with Coastal staff is, yes, it is a piece of critical infrastructure in this whole system, but they understand that a lift station is easier to, in the case of natural disasters, is easier to bring back online than an entire water reclamation facility. Much of the lift station is located below ground and is sealed, so it is protected from inundation. Yes, there are strategic electrical components above ground. They will be located in accordance with our flood damage prevention regulations at two feet, feet above the flood elevation. We believe that it is a reasonable proposal to build a lift station west of the highway while the major components of this infrastructure are moved inland. That's.
And we'll have more discussion when the item comes up?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
And any other questions, council, that, on that, from notes? John, Marla, Pat?
Rob, just the other thing that Mr. Brandon talked about was the bonding requirements were excessively high. Could you just speak to that on the RFQ?
So we wanted contractors with experience in the magnitude of our project. And they will need to show that they can bond for a project that they propose on. So we want them with a couple of projects that are in the $80 million range of experience. And when they, the proposers propose, they're going to have to show that they can bond for what they're, what the costs that they are proposing for. So if they're proposing to build it for the optimistic $50 million, they'll have to show that they can bond for $50 million.
Anything else?
Well, just to be clear, that the next phase, the RFP phase, that is where you will be very specific about what we're expecting in terms of size and then location and site plan and not necessarily what was in the current facilities master plan. Is that correct?
Correct. We'll modify that based on both peer review input and council direction. So that'll be the performance spec. We'll be issuing a performance spec that will be reviewed by our Citizens Committee and by council before it goes out. And then that's what the prospective contractors will be bidding on. And we're expecting a guaranteed maximum price on that bid, along with lifecycle costs.
All right. So we will have another opportunity?
The rest of the, I'm sorry, the rest of the discussion will take place on, on C2?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, Pat?
Yes, Rob, I have a question for you. I sent an email to you. I received an email talking about the various concepts or issues or questions about Morro Bay teaming up with the Los Osos Sewer District. And I think you responded to them, but could you explain some of the various issues that came, have come up with Morro Bay teaming up with the Los Osos Sewer District and how or how not that is a good question, thing to do?
Sure.
Before we go into that, I feel like we're going into the discussion of item C2 and we're really just kind of concluding public comment. So I just wanted to make sure we're taking, concentrating our discussion basically on public comment items. And then as we get into the item C2, we'll take our discussion there. I just want, I just want to make sure we're kind of on track there.
The reason I wanted to bring it up now, and if you would, we'd like me to wait, I totally, totally will, but I do believe this bridge away, is a little bit away from the lift station itself. And so that's why I wanted to ask it now. But if you'd like me to wait, I will.
I, I just want to make sure that we're keeping our discussion on, on point.
Well, this is more, this is more of an email public comment, so that's why I wanted to speak to it now. But if you want me to wait, I will.
Yeah, I just, just want to make sure we're, we're on track. If we can just kind of keep it concise, I'm sure we can open up more dialogue during the item C2.
Okay. All right. Then I'll wait.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks. Not to make things awkward, I just want to make sure we're on, on a kind of developing conversation there on an item that we're going to be addressing later in the evening. With that, our closed session items are complete, or excuse me, our public comment items are complete and we'll move on to consent. I have two items, two people, two speaker slips for consent, Jeff Heller and then Betty Winholtz for public comment on consent. Come on up, Jeff, and then Betty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Jeff Heller. The consent item regarding goals for the WRF, I think the goals are great. The concern I have is that the recent SOQ meeting did not seem to be in sync with the goals. And I know you haven't officially approved the goals yet, but I would hope that the council, once these goals are approved tonight, would direct staff to follow those goals. The fact that the presentation a week ago to vendors still showed the $150 million gold-plated project is a big disconnect. The goals and what staff does and what your consultants do need to follow your direction. I'm glad you're resetting the goals and expect you to direct staff specifically to follow those goals. I was very disappointed to know that the presentation included a number of things which we tried to, which were realized from the peer review meeting that was held in June where the experts got together and had a lot of great suggestions. One was to put the plant at or near the existing site. Well, we can't check that box. The other was to delete or reduce the scope of the $6 million support facility. I haven't seen anything in writing from the council checking that box or crossing that off, so staff continues to present it. No revision of the site planned, eliminating excavation into the site. I don't understand why we need to wait for goals for the council to give direction on very specific cost-saving ideas that were raised three, four months ago. It's frustrating to us and the feeling that we get is you're going ahead with a $150 million project. So Citizens for Affordable Living, which you know is a community-based group, which I'm involved in, our goal is, two years ago, this was a $75 million plant at Rancho Colina. With Cayucas coming offline, we calculate our 75% to be 56.5 million dollar plant. And our position is build what you can for 56.5 million. We will not support another penny. You have not tried hard enough to make that number work. That number will work. You have a consultant managing the project whose fee is based on the cost of the project. His fee is based on the cost of the project and you've signed a 10-year contract with this consultant who estimates they'll make between nine and 14 million by the time the project is done. This should be a four or $5 million project. What do you need $10 million, a 10-year contract for with the consultant? I've talked over and over again, a project manager, no one is managing our checkbook. Nobody is. Until you hire an independent project manager who is paid to watch the pennies, they will continue to flow out the door. The reason all these big firms came to this SOQ, let me finish my thought, because I've worked for several of them throughout my career.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
Okay. I'm going to conclude this sentence. They are here because of the pork. You think these big firms would even come to a meeting?
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude, Jeff.
10,000 people if they weren't.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Betty Winholtz. I sent you an email today and I'm going to go ahead and read it out loud for the benefit of the public. There is inconsistency between the goals in A1 and your C2, as well as inconsistencies between AB and the bid package, which several speakers have already spoken to. In other words, you're giving the impression to the public that you're being two-faced. You're doing one thing in this direction on A8 and doing a different thing on C2. So in the first instance, I'm referring to goal one in A8 and I'll quote, "All aspects of the WRF project shall be completed, ensuring economic value with a specific emphasis on minimizing ratepayer and city expense," unquote. Yet in C2, you are approving money for the design of a massive lift station, miles of pipes for which you have no EIR, no permits, and no money to build. Are you assuming the community will not challenge you on the EIR or the permits? Are you assuming that you're going to get your 218? Are you assuming that you're not going to have to redesign the lift station, as several people have suggested, once you know what your official project is because you have continued to not define the project? Okay. In the second instance, all of those things cost us more money. In the second instance, I'm referring to goal number one that I just mentioned about reducing expense and going in with number seven, which you at the past meetings have said that you wanted to eliminate. And you want to eliminate, quote, "The design to allow for other possible municipal functions," unquote. And we've already heard that yet in the bid package, you still have the $6 million office building and bay that will house approximately one-fifth of the city employees. Okay? This is extravagant to me to think that we're going to have a building that's worth $6 million for 20 people. And that moving 20 people outside of town for a plant that does not take 20 people to run it means that you are designing for other municipal functions out there. So again, there's that contradiction. So these kinds of inconsistencies cause the community to not trust you. We don't think that you have our economic best interests at heart. And so if you're going to sock it to us and make us pay these big bucks, at least be consistent and don't think that we're dummies and we don't get it. Okay? What we would really like for you to do is to mind the store and keep the costs down as promised. The buck stops with you. It's not about the consultant or what staff is recommending, but you've allowed these kinds of decisions to go out because you haven't said to them, "No" to the $6 million. You haven't said "no" to other kinds of items. So it's really up to you to be the leaders and say no when you need to say no. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. David Nelson? And that's my, my last speaker slip for consent. David Nelson for consent?
Sorry, I almost lost my chance to talk on this one. It slipped by me. I'm talking, of course, on item AA and again, I'll ring in with everything you've heard. You haven't gotten any positive feedback. Have you noticed that? I mean, this is just, we shouldn't be doing this. We shouldn't have to go through and fight over items like this. This is, you are pushing for this plant that you want to design. You don't have to design it. We don't have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants to tell us how to build this plant that we don't want. I don't know how I can get it through to you. These are 20th century plants that we're building. We're in the 21st century. There's exciting stuff out there that can be done. EPA gave us $85 million to be creative. This isn't being creative. The last I heard, and I'm sorry I was out of town on the last October meeting, the last that I heard, this is just going nuts. I mean, why are we going to build this? I mean, I, I brought up the questions before. We paid consultants to tell us that we can't afford it. Why would you get requests for qualified people to bid on something we don't want and can't afford? There are things we will want and we can afford. I mean, I've been yelling for a new sewer plant for a decade over. I mean, 2001, 2000, I don't remember, but it's always been the same thing. It seems somehow you get hatched a plan and you're not going to let go of it, no matter what. And it's like a hundred and, or a million and a half dollars to build a lift station that we may or may not use. We just built a lift station down there not that long ago. In my recent memory, we had that street open and putting in a lift station to take care of the houses that are there. Now to build another lift station without knowing what kind of plant we're going to have, and it can't be this plant. I don't understand why you would even talk about using a part of a plant that we can't afford to justify spending a million and a half dollars for. Explain that to us. For all the reasons that were in the letters that were in to the council, explain that to us. It's just not making sense. Let's work together and just get something that really works. Come on, we can do this, but we can't do this because you are not listening to us. We asked for this project to be killed years ago and it hasn't been and it just keeps morphing into this. Now you want to spend a million and a half after spending environmental study money on three or four areas? And I still don't know which area you picked because the last time I heard, you were looking at, back at other areas, the sites that you already said were good and weren't good. This is criticizing what you're doing? Stop what you're doing.
Thanks, David.
Stop this plan.
Thanks. That concludes all our public comment speaker slips for consent. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And I was going to pull item A8. Are there any other items to pull?
Item A6 and 7.
A6, A7, A8?
I also wanted to pull A8.
A8. So Marla, she have some comments on that? Anybody else? All right. I take a motion to approve all items on consent, with the exception of item A6, A7, and A8.
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Item A6, I'll just take them in order of number. John?
Thank you. Item A6 is the issue of designating the authorizing investment transaction officers. And I spoke to Jennifer earlier today, or I didn't speak to her, but I emailed and we chatted by email. And Jen, if you could just, for me, under the background and discussion, could you give us some insight as to what the last sentence means with regard to investing money with any sound financial institution? Not really quite sure what that means and what the qualifications are for that. And I think it would be important for the public to hear what they are.
Thank you. No problem. The city adopts an investment policy and that investment policy has to comply with the governing California government code. And it begins on section 56000 or 536000, I apologize. The investment policy that we have is about 11 pages. It's available on our website and in the approved budget document. And any investment that we do will have to comply with that policy. The specific sections that are most relatable here are the authorized financial dealers and institutions and then the suitable and authorized investments. So the investment policy outlines eight suitable investments. The LEAF is one of those. It addresses money markets, securities of US governments, and then there's a section following that that talks about prohibited investment types and those being inverse floaters and range notes and those types of things. So when we speak about a sound financial institution, it's something that complies with what our investment policy outlines and also the government code.
And just really briefly, could you speak to the risk of the investment grade we might be able to invest in? How would you characterize the risk? High, low, medium?
You know, based on reading through the investment policy, we're, we're practicing a passive portfolio management, so pretty low-risk investments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move, move for approval or do you want to wait till the end on that?
If you want to move for approval.
Sure. Move for approval of item A6?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson on item A6 to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. That was Mr. Heading on the motion, Ms. McPherson on the second. Okay, thanks. And then Item A7.
Sure, thank you. And I had an email conversation earlier with Eric regarding this issue and wanted to publicly vet this and bring it out and daylight it. So two questions. First, trying to understand where the disconnect might have been between the initial understanding of the contract and the current understanding, and why the surprise of about $45,000 in terms of the ask that we have tonight? If you could give us some insights as to what happened?
Sure, Councilman, I'd be glad to. And I'll try to boil down my email response a little thinner because I know it was pretty long and involved. Basically, when we applied for this grant back in 2014 and started this process 2013, 2014, it was Department of Boating Waterways, DBW's desire that they work up the engineering concept and the cost estimates for us to insert into our application, and they came up with about $1.75 million cost estimation in a one-page design concept with bullet points on the items that were to be taken care of. It was a good project. It involved lots of things at the public launch ramp, including changing the ramp, ADA improvements, fish cleaning station improvements, lots of things across the board at that whole facility. As we moved forward through the process, it got the grant approved, got city council approval earlier this year. And then as we start into our engineering and design team contracts and developing those contracts, which necessarily have to go to Department of Boating Waterways for approval, we started discovering inconsistencies between the concept design that Department of Boating Waterways envisioned, and their cost estimation, and their feasibility report, and things weren't matching as we were trying to reconcile those. Because the scope of the project, the engineering costs are really driven by the scope of the project. The bigger the project, the bigger engineering costs. So we, as we were working up our engineering contracts, our scope wasn't matching what DBW's belief of the scope was and what we believed it was based on the concept design that they came up with. So it became apparent that we came to somewhat of an impasse with Department of Boating Waterways and the inconsistencies between their own internal documentation. In hindsight, I wish we would have developed our own project concept and cost estimations and inserted that into the grant, but that's not the way DBW wanted to do it. So now we're trying to backtrack into their concept and make sure that their scope and engineering matches our scope and engineering, so that we're designing the right project from a cost standpoint. Ground truth, our cost estimations, they've got some cost estimates in their engineering that are just really wildly inaccurate from what we understand the project to be, specifically with some ADA and other issues. Their cost estimations just don't match, and what we want to be sure we're doing is that the city's not out on a limb with some unfunded liabilities going forward and then having a project that the answer from DBW may end up being, "Well, those are additional costs that weren't in the project, and we're not going to cover them. It's on the city." So I don't want to have to go there. So we're going to have to kind of back into it, get a consultant, and I hesitate to use that word because it seems like that's a bad word right now, but hire a consultant to assist with developing an RSP for engineering services. Really, we're going to have to get down on the ground at the ramp and kind of double-check DBW's engineering estimations and what the scopes are, reconcile that with the department, and then work up our own cost estimations and make sure we work with the department on that, and then see where we end up at the end of the day. So I'm going to need some consultant help to get me to that point, to work up these contracts with Department of Boating Waterways and scoping, and put, as Department of Boating Waterways often says, they want the grantee to have some skin in the game, so this is going to have to be some of our skin in the game. And again, in hindsight, yeah, I would have done something differently. Another factor in this whole process is DBW has now moved over into Parks, where it used to be its own department, and now it's a division, and things have changed pretty drastically within the department, unfortunately not always for the better. So we're working through changes within the department itself. But it's a good project, some good changes and good improvements that need to happen. We're trying to salvage the grant and all the work that's been done so far, regroup and move forward with the department, and it's going to take us getting some more work done on our end, and then going back to DBW, making sure things match.
And the last question would be, in your estimation, is there a chance that as we bring this consultant on, that we're going to get another surprise with regard to issues being found and inconsistencies in interpretation?
I don't anticipate that. I would hope not. We need to get, like I say, back, get our scopes matching with Department of Boating Waterways' scope, and get our cost estimations right. Like I said, there's some things that just don't match from a scope standpoint, and I'm comfortable moving forward with this part of it, because if we end up having to back out of this grant altogether and regrouping and applying for a new grant, we'll still use the work that we do today moving forward. I'm just hoping we can salvage the existing grant in the time that we've gone so far and not have to go through a whole nother cycle of applying to Department of Boating Waterways, which can take a couple of years. As you know, we applied, started applying back in '13, '14, didn't get it into the governor's budget until I think '15, '16, and it really got approved in '17. So I don't want to lose that time as well, so I'm hopeful that we can salvage it and keep it moving forward.
Well, I think it's $1,009,000 is a significant amount of money, and it's a very much needed project. And so thanks for that explanation. I'm glad you're on top of it. I'm just concerned about any future expenditures and know that you're going to be watching that closely. Thanks for being transparent and bringing that forward. I would move approval on A7.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, Item A8. Marleus, you want to start off on that? I pull it. I just wanted to talk through some of the history on the goals, but, okay. So as, I pulled this item because we started with these goals by inception when we first started the project, and we went through our meeting on October 24th and reviewed, we reviewed all those then, had good discussion with council, refined those and brought them back on consent. With that, I think it's just worthwhile noting that, you know, part of the project, it has involved, and it was well-worked through on an October 24th council meeting. We still, I think there were some comments about how they synced up, and I think I even had some comments with Rob earlier today on some of our goals and how it applies to Item C2, which we'll have the discussion on as well. But it is part of the project, and we actually brought this back forward to approve and ratify tonight. So I just wanted to say good work from council on that. Marleus?
Let me, I would first like to ask Rob, because the issue came up on consent, even though we had not officially approved these, we had a discussion, we made a motion, and we did actually approve goals. We asked to bring them back, but these goals were the ones written into the RFQ. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the people that were responding to that were, they understood that we had changed and modified the goals?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And then I have just a couple of suggested changes to the goals. I hate to do that, but, you know, when you have time to reflect and think about it afterwards. So if I may just propose them, and we'll see where it goes, see if anybody else agrees with me. On Goal Number 1, 2, 3, 4, which is designed to produce reclaimed wastewater to augment the city's water supply by either indirect, by direct or indirect means, I would ask that we strike as described in a master water reclamation plan, and instead say, "To maximize funding opportunities and in the most efficient and cost-effective method available." I was concerned because I have continued to believe that the way we're reusing water is continually changing, and the methodology and the technology is changing, and when we actually do it, implement it, it may not be what is in the current water reclamation plan, and I just didn't want any confusion. This is general enough that I think it subsumes what we want to achieve without tying it to a specific plan. So that was my logic. So that's, we can discuss these one at a time if you'd like.
Any comments from council on that? I'll look to John.
Could you just read it without the verbiage?
Right, yes.
And just like you'd like it stated?
Yes, I will. Designed to produce reclaimed wastewater to augment the city's water supply by either direct or indirect means, to maximize funding opportunities, and in the most efficient and cost-effective method available.
And in the most efficient, cost-effective method available?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it captures the idea that we are concerned about being cost-effective, and it just leaves open how we might do it at the time that we are actually reclaiming the water. There is additional testing that is necessary, as I understand it, to know whether or not the groundwater recharge into the Morro Basin will actually work. So it's just leaving the final decision on how we're going to reuse the water to when we actually make a final decision, which we have not made yet.
Hate to be maybe the English teacher, but could, saying the same thing, could it say, "Designed to produce reclaimed wastewater to augment the city's water supply by either direct or indirect means in the most efficient, cost-effective method available, and to maximize funding opportunities?"
Absolutely.
That be okay?
Yes.
Okay. I feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Matt, Brad?
I'm okay with that if I could hear from Mr. Livick, if that changes anything in his methodology.
I don't believe so. We still have to get through procurement. The design builder will have to design a system, and there may be some changes in the regulations between now and then. I believe that augmenting the city water supply will be reclaiming it by either direct or indirect means. The exact method may change over time.
Rob, the only question I have is, as far as the master water reclamation plan, when we get into, no different than C2 and developing the RFQ and those types of criteria for contractors to bid on, there will be language in there in which, hey, here's one of the goals, but it would be prudent for us to say, "Oh, and by the way, we have a water reclamation plan that we've developed, and that's one tool that we need to review as part of that process." Would that, is that fair to say?
Yes. Also, the water reclamation plan is something that we did receive grant money for, so council will need to eventually approve that in some form, most likely in conjunction with the EIR.
Okay.
Is when that will happen, we'll confirm all of the policy decisions that are in that water reclamation plan.
Okay.
And is that, that's a dynamic document, not a static document. Is that correct?
Yes, because water reclamation today is far different than it was when we wrote in our 1987 LCP that we were going to have water reclamation.
So I just want to, as you go on to the next one, just if we can recraft that, I know you went back and forth on both comments, so if we can make sure, we can go back and forth and verbally repeat that, so we all know exactly what that was one more time?
Sure.
Design and produce reclaimed wastewater to augment the city's water supply by either direct or indirect means in the most efficient, cost-effective method available, and maximize funding opportunities.
Okay. Did you get that, Dana? Okay? All right, good.
And then one other suggestion that I'd like us to discuss is, this is Goal 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, Goal 6, not counting, well, counting the one that we're eliminating. This is recommending, this is designing, instead of designing for energy recovery, we're saying, "Include features in the WRF project that maximize the city's opportunities to secure funding and maximize efficiencies." And I would like to add, "Including energy generation and recovery," since we've...
Actually, I think we said it last time, and it just didn't get included.
I think so too. I think we actually did have that in there. That's why I wanted to bring it up again.
I'd support it.
Thank you.
Any comments? Brad, Matt? Okay. So just read that one more time for Dana.
I will. Include features in the WRF project that maximize the city's opportunities to secure funding and maximize efficiencies, comma, "including energy generation and recovery."
Any other comments?
I move we approve Item A8.
Second. With stated changes?
With stated changes, thank you.
Second. So we have a motion, Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Heading. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. That concludes our consent. I know we, I know we, is everybody okay moving forward? We'll just get through B1, okay? All right, thanks. So let's move on to Item B1 next on the agenda. Item B1 is the, the subject for this is continuation of public hearing for concept conditional use permit, number UPO 448. For 945 Embarcadero, the project includes remodel of existing restaurant, harbor walk, public access improvements, improvements to the adjacent anchor park. And I'm looking at Scott for this one. This is, have you got this one?
Sure. Mayor Irons, members of council. We were requesting that this item be continued. It was heard by the council back on October 10th of 2017, and there was a direction by council to provide some changes to the project related to the alignment and configuration and design of the harbor walk and anchor park improvements. And there was also a request to return with some of the engineering related to the seawall repair that was proposed. It was continued to a date certain, tonight, and the applicant hasn't been able to come back with requested information yet, so we're requesting it to be continued to a date uncertain so we can accommodate the timeframe that they need to bring forward requested information to council. So looks like we'd be probably agendizing this in the next couple of months to bring it back. I mean, they're not far off, but it'll be coming back soon.
Okay, so the recommendation is to, for council, continue the public hearing for an item for concept conditional use permit to a date uncertain at this time.
Correct, uncertain.
Okay. I don't have any speaker slips, but I know Kathy, the agent, is here. Did you want to come up?
Good evening, Mayor Irons and council members. Kathy Novak, project representative. We're continuing to look at the WRF alternatives and the associated work, so we appreciate your patience with this. It's taking us a little longer than we thought, so we would be supportive of continuing this to a date uncertain. Thank you.
Okay, great. And I don't have any public comment for this. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to your council. Unless there's any questions, I'd take a motion to staff recommendation to continue the public hearing for this conditional use permit, UPO 448, to a date uncertain. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, great. All right, moving on to our next item, Item C1. Item C1, here we go. And Mr. Pononi, so we, this is our second reading, and this is for the adoption of ordinance number 612, which establishes the commercial canvas operations and regulatory program. I won't read the whole thing. I'll turn it over to you, and you can give us a presentation at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. My presentation is going to be very brief. And as you said, this is the second reading of an ordinance that you introduced last meeting, and it include, the ordinance on the agenda includes the minor modifications that you had asked for at that meeting, and so it's ready for adoption, if that's what you want to do, and that's my report.
Okay, great. And the reason we brought it back on, just for information, second readings can't come back on consent, and we chose to bring it back on business item because we did include some of the changes. We've had some pretty good activity as far as public comment on this item, so we just went ahead and put it back on a business item instead of a consent. So with that, unless there's any questions, I have some speaker slips out open for public comment. Any questions from council? Seeing none, okay. I'll open... slips out open for public comment. Any questions from council? Seeing none, okay. I'll open up for public comment at this time, so this item C1, Jesse Barron, and then Rick Morse.
Hi, my name is Jesse Barron, Barone. Miss, if I'm not wrong.
Sorry, sorry about that, drum, Barone.
I'm a current city planning commissioner, but I'm speaking as a private citizen, so I apologize for not speaking up earlier, the last reading, but I did notice that there have been some, well, it's a very fluid situation with the state, with the county. Obviously, everybody's, a lot of behind the scenes, a lot of discussion at county level. So what I would recommend would be, to me, it doesn't seem very, let me back up once. So the difference between recreational and medicinal is, from a public agency perspective, is only the taxes. So we're not receiving those taxes from the medicinal that we would from the recreational sales. So that, in the proposed ordinance, I see that only medicinal deliveries will continue after the first of the year, and then only applications for medicinal dispensaries can be submitted in July. And I just think that we're actively looking for revenue streams. It seems like there's a bright one sitting right in front of us, and it would be prudent to acknowledge that the county is probably in a position where they're going to be allowing recreational deliveries right outside of our immediate jurisdiction, as are the neighboring jurisdictions, City of Bakersfield, Kern County, they're all kind of following suit with the recreational only, I'm sorry, recreational deliveries in lieu of brick and mortar dispensaries. So my recommendation would be to allow the recreational deliveries immediately on January 1st, and then allow the, and I agree with the abundance of caution. That's a great, it's a great stance, and I think we're poised to do good things, and I just wouldn't want to see a revenue stream missed. So.
Okay, Jesse, thank you. Next, we have Rick Morse.
Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Rick Morse, and I represent Medmar Clinic. My comments on that are going to be brief. What I would like to speak to are the delivery services in general. I've appeared before this board before, this council before, and recommended that the delivery services be licensed through the storefronts. There are a couple of reasons it would allow the storefronts the availability to non-ambulatory and seriously ill patients. One of the concepts that you really need to recognize as far as delivery services is that you need to identify where the deliveries are going to be made to. My recommendations would be that you isolate the deliveries to a person's home or residence, to their place of employment, or to a motel room. In the business of medical marijuana, I've heard a lot of horror stories about delivery services meeting in restaurant parking lots, or the parking lots of Albertson's, places like that. So these are the types of things that you might want to consider whenever you license the delivery services along with the storefronts in Morro Bay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adam Pentzretz. I'm almost getting that right, but I'm getting close. And then Kinley Flaherty.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. My name is Adam Pentzretz. I'm the director of government and community relations for Ethno-Botanica. And more than anything, I really just wanted to come here tonight to thank you, the city council, and all the city staff for all the work you've done on this. I realize, you know, at this point, we're going to move forward with what we've got, and before the end of the year, to make sure that Morro Bay does have its say on this matter. And so I really wouldn't want to delay that any further. I would just ask that perhaps subsequently you do consider some sort of provisional, conditional authorization contingent entirely upon state licensing and a complete application process, no change to that. But just so that the most responsible cannabis businesses that you could possibly have operating in your city are able to dual-track getting their state license as they prepare to apply for your city permits. The state just needs any kind of documentation showing that we are permitted to seek a state license in order to do future business in this city. So that's the only thing I ask, but other than that, I'm really just here to say thank you, and have a good night.
Thanks, Adam. Kinley Flaherty? Flaherty? Come on up, Kinley.
Hello.
Pull that mic down, please. Thanks. Good job.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're all having a good evening. My name is Kinley Flaherty, and I am a junior at Morro Bay High School. I'm also a member of the FNL program that is currently at Morro Bay High. As a high school student who is active in our community, I'm here tonight to express my views on the marijuana ordinance. It is very vital for us to be careful about our actions concerning the marijuana ordinance, because while our decisions mainly appear to be in regard to medical businesses and the financial implications with that, our decisions will have a direct effect on our future generations. And so I'm asking that we stay vigilant and focused on every detail of this ordinance, because no matter what, minors will experience negative effects from this law due to more accessibility, availability, and advertisement of marijuana in our community. The reality is that our efforts that now are going to have a direct impact for years to come, so please ensure that you give your full attention to all decisions concerning the ordinance. Thank you for listening. I hope you have a great evening, and I am very interested to see how this plays out in the future concerning our beautiful community.
Kinley, thanks for coming out. David Nelson.
Hi, David Nelson, Morro Bay. My opinion, I looked over quickly your changes, and to not allow recreational sale in our town is totally absurd. This is something that's legal in our state. The voters have voted for it. I don't understand why the vote doesn't carry any weight around here, because these ordinances are just ridiculous. I mean, you're going to tax a private citizen for growing a couple pot plants in his backyard. You're going to have a fee for that. You don't charge people to grow avocados. Well, it's a difference. Why don't you tax avocados? I mean, this is just, you know, it's reefer madness come to our community. Our people voted for this. I mean, the vote even went up from medical to recreational. And for you to sit there and turn your back on a multi-billion dollar industry, we're on highway one. Oh, my God. We're going to have, we're going to have, we have more growers in this area than they can even sell outside of our area. This is going to be something that's going to be sold, let's face it, it's been sold here forever. Now you get a chance to tax it, and you're not going to. And that's just foolishness, because anybody who wants it's going to get it. They're going to pick it up down in the Royal Grande or Grover Beach, and they're going to get the tax money. I mean, I know you, some of you people don't like this idea that it's going to happen, but God, there's a lot of things I don't like that I have to put up with. And this is America, and we voted on this, and you have no right to be doing ordinances like this. Rob Schultz, years ago, wrote better stuff than this. He set it up where we're going to make money. You guys are setting it up like it's some kind of criminal act, which I never believed it was. I mean, and there's lots of evidence to show that. And just stop it. This is not necessary. You don't have to ban people from growing more than two plants in their backyard or whatever, when the state says you can have seven. I mean, if you're bothering your neighbor, then there's an issue, but I've had it in my neighborhood, and I put up with it, and it doesn't bother me at all. I hate jasmine. I can't have my neighbors tear out their jasmine plants. I choke up with jasmine. It hits me physically. So let's stop this, and let's be real about this, and let's take advantage of it. And it's going to happen anyway. To believe that it's not going to happen, you're just sitting there believing that you can build a $157 million sewer.
Thanks. I don't have any more speaker slips. Are there any more public comment for this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Ready for discussion? I'll start with Marlis on this side this time.
Okay, sure. I would first like to just address some of the comments that were made in the comment period here. Just to give you a little bit of background, we have been working on this project really for almost a year, certainly for nine months, and we've had a number of public workshops. We've had probably six or seven council meetings where we've discussed the topic. So there, what we have come up with is actually based on a lot of public input and a lot of discussion with staff, and we had a subcommittee of the council that actually worked with staff to come up with the recommended ordinance. With respect to the issue of why we are not moving forward with recreational marijuana at the present time, we don't have the authority to tax it at this point. So what we decided is that we need to take a wait-and-see approach. We are recommending that we consider putting a tax measure on the ballot in 2018, because we have to first say we're going to tax recreational marijuana before we can collect a tax. So the voters have to approve it, and we don't have that yet. In Grover Beach, they moved very rapidly, and they started by passing the tax, and that's what is now allowing them to collect the tax. So we are, we are listening to the public who voted in favor of the recreational marijuana, but we really, this is going to give them another opportunity to say, yes, we really do want you to move forward with recreational dispensaries or recreational deliveries. I would also point out that there aren't really that many medical marijuana dispensaries being allowed in the county, so it isn't really that accessible. Grover Beach has moved very rapidly, but many communities are actually banning everything. So Morro Bay is somewhere in between the extremes, and we thought it was a very reasoned and principled approach that made a lot of sense. With respect to growing, what is allowed in the state law is you can grow six plants indoors. So there is no direct provision that you can allow any outdoors. We decided, after a lot of discussion, that we could allow up to two outdoors, provided that we were really very careful about making sure that there was a distance from the neighbors, that it was not visible, that it was locked, that it was not accessible to young people or anybody else. So we really did try to think of every aspect, and we were always balancing the issue of public safety with the realization that the community did vote to support recreational use. So that's kind of the rationale that we took as a subcommittee. So, and I think we've listened a number of times to both citizens and also the industry itself, and tried to make modifications that represent a balance. So I certainly would support our moving forward at this point.
Okay, Marlis, I was going to turn to Red as the other subcommittee member to make his comments. And thanks, Red.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Irons. I always love following Marlis, because she speaks so beautifully, and she really covered everything. I have nothing to add, and I'm ready to move forward with the ordinance.
Thanks, Red. How about you, Matt? All right, good. John?
Wow. So I want to thank the subcommittee again for all the time that they put in. I think you did a commendable job in a very difficult ordinance that's been crafted that's fair, and I appreciate Marlis's summary about recreational use and taxation and the revenue opportunities. They are there, but again, the rationale was, if you don't have the mechanism to tax, let's hold off and get that first, if indeed that will pass, and then move forward considering the other. I want to thank Kinley Flaherty. When a junior in high school comes out and publicly gets up and is postured and speaks eloquently and poised to address an issue that is important to young people, that's probably the only time I would tolerate your applause, and I didn't hear it. But anyway, I want to applaud you. Kinley, are you still here?
She is.
Great. Well, I just want to applaud you for coming out, and thank you for holding us responsible to stay vigilant, and I wrote your word down, with regard to maintaining this ordinance. And so for all of the young people in the community, you're an extreme voice of reason. I appreciate that, and please come back and make sure that we are being vigilant, as I support the ordinance as presented with regard to the second reading as well. Thank you all.
All right, thanks, John. I echo everyone's comments, including Kinley. I wrote out, I wrote down the same comment in vigilant, and appreciate everybody's comments coming in tonight. Interesting, the having, getting to the point of a second reading was pretty much to the point where we went through the first reading, we made all the, went through all the efforts and all the time with Marlis and Red as subcommittee members, many work and workshops, getting to this point, you know, typically at the second reading, it's like, okay, we've already done all this, we're ready to approve it. Not to discount the comments that were made at all, but it was, but it's interesting to hear comments and saying we should consider recreational use, yet, Kinley, you reminded us, too, to be vigilant and be thinking about that. There's time to, it's a living document. There's time to make corrections on this, but I think we are being vigilant and diligent. I think some of the early comments were that this doesn't have to be an all-fit-all type of ordinance. We could make it fit for the city of Morro Bay, and we can develop it as needed. So I'm supportive of the ordinance as is, and unless there's any other discussion points, we'd consider a motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion. I move we adopt by second reading by title only and with further reading waived ordinance number 612, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Morro Bay, California, adding chapter 5.50 Commercial Cannabis Operations Regulatory Program to Title V of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to permit certain medical commercial cannabis uses, retail sales, deliveries, and wholesale distributor, to prohibit all other medical commercial cannabis uses, and to prohibit all adult-use recreational commercial cannabis uses, repealing chapter 9.06 of Title IX of the Morro Bay Municipal Code and replacing it with a new chapter 9.06 Personal Cannabis Cultivation to regulate personal cannabis cultivation, and amending chapter 9.24 Secondhand Smoking Regulations of Title IX of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to strengthen regulation of secondhand smoke and expressly include cannabis and electronic smoking devices.
I second.
We have a motion by Ms. McPherson, a second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion at this point? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries five oh. Great work. Okay. Are we doing okay for right now? Or any need for recess, or short recess, or ready to continue on? Ready to continue on? Okay. Good. Looks like our next item up, item C2. Item C2 is consideration of proposal by and approval of contract with Waterworks Engineers for engineering design services for the water reclamation facility, lift station, and off-site pipelines. This would be Mr. Livick.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, council. As the mayor said, this item is to consider the award of a contract for design of our proposed lift station and off-site pipelines to Waterworks Engineering. Maybe not. There we go. Staff recommendations is to award a contract to Waterworks Engineering for the engineering lift station, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $1,353,574, and authorize a 10% contingency for a total authorization and authorize a 10% contingency for a total authorization of $1,488,931. You might be asking yourself, why are we doing this project now? This project provides supporting environmental information for our WIFIA loan application process. Missing that application deadline for WIFIA will substantially increase costs. This is taking the advantage of subsidized funding versus bond funding. It allows refined costs to inform the rate analysis later on this spring. It's also to support the EIR with more detailed pipeline locations. It provides mapping of biological and cultural resources along the route to facilitate work in the EIR and the NEPA or federal environmental determinations. The fiscal impacts in the city's 1718 approved budget, the council adopted, there was $1.2 million included for lift station design services. There's a typo in the staff report that talks about that was approved in the 1617 budget. It was actually in the 1718 budget. As an aside, we also approved that in the 1617 budget, thinking we would get about 60% of that design work done a couple of years ago. But as we know now, we've revisited a couple of sites, and it's taken a little bit longer for us to get here. The total WRF budget that was approved with this budget year was $4.26 million. This agreement includes about $183,000 in construction services that actually won't be expended until construction in 2021 timeframe. Based on this updated site comparison study, 10% of the cost was assumed for design. The estimated design cost is $1.346 million, including that construction phase work. And this is funded out of our $8.3 million sewer accumulation fund balance. I just want to note that we also assumed at the end of this fiscal year, after we expend the money for this capital projects, along with some collection system projects and some equipment replacement, we will have an estimated fund balance of just over $5.1 million. Here's a little depiction of this year's budget with the blue pie, the kind of lightish-blue pie slice, as the lift station and force main design work out of the total $4.2 million WRF budget that was approved. So it's about 28% of that budget. It also includes things like city staff time at about $100,000. We have some materials and lab work that we do for about $55,000. We have a program management. We have design phase of the design-build project that we assume that we are going to be starting on in this fiscal year, and the environmental work, which is included in those other consulting services. The RFP proposed that the consultant take on the major design tasks of coordination with the city for final selection of lift station location and pipeline alignment, perform the hydraulic analysis, pump selection, wet well design, odor control design, design of the backup power supply, force main pipeline design, brine discharge pipeline design. What's not included in this is the design of the piping on the preferred WRF site. So the piping from, say, the fence line to the treatment processes would be included in the design-build of the WRF project, and any reclaimed water distribution system is not included in this. Engineering Design Services include review and verification of preliminary design criteria, development of site alternatives, finalize the selection of the lift station site, development of pipeline alignment study to finalize pipeline routes, preparation of the concept-design report, preparation of draft construction documents, including cost opinions, final construction documents, plans, specifications, and cost opinions, and construction phase support, which previously stated, won't occur until we get into construction, probably in the 2021 timeframe. The selection process timeframe is January of this year, WRF CAC reviewed the RFP and selected Steve Shively and Valerie LeVilette from the larger committee to review the proposals. We held a pre-proposal meeting in beginning of February. March 8th, four proposals were received from Cannon Corporation, M&amp;S Engineers, Rick Engineering, and Water Works Engineers. The review team met to discuss the proposals on March 27th, and on August 10th of 2017, interviews were held. The selection criteria that the committee used to evaluate the proposals was understanding of the scope of work, past performance and related experience of the firm, expertise of technical and professional design team members assigned to the project, who's going to be the project team and are they capable of doing the work? In other words, what their proposed project approach was, recent experience successfully performing similar projects, and their demonstrated ability to conform with the city's contractual Another question that comes up is why aren't we performing this work as part of the design-build procurement process? We believe that there's increased bid competition because the project is of a scope that local general engineering construction firms could competitively bid on a project of this size. Both the lift station and pipelines require detailed design plans for city planning commission and council review for the permitting process. Lift station is not on the critical path for the project scheduled for construction-wise, although, as stated earlier, it is on the funding-critical path because we need some of the preliminary information from this work to feed into our WIFIA loan application. And it's not on the South Bay Boulevard site. So in conclusion, staff recommends that we award this contract of engineering design services for lift station off-site pipelines to Water Works Engineering based on solicitation and review process that took place starting in January of 17. I'm happy to answer questions you might have on this project.
Great, thanks. And I'll start with questions to my left. Red, you want to start off with questions?
This project is going to design the pipeline from the lift station out to South Bay, and then the brine discharge to go back. What about the injection wells, the pipelines that are going to take the reclaimed water from South Bay potentially back to our aquifer? What I'm concerned about, is that going to follow the same path? Can we put all three of those pipes into construction at the same time? I'm curious about the staging of that work.
So we need to do another task before we can confirm the injection location, should we proceed forward with IPR. And we have two potential sites that meet the state's modeling criteria for groundwater injection. State Health requires also some pilot-scale testing to prove that the model is correct. So what we'll do is, the model shows four months of travel time. What we need to do is prove by tracer study that we have at least two months of travel time in actual ground conditions. So we feel fairly confident that either one of those sites will prove that out, but we think it's best to keep both of them in play until we confirm that with actual field work. So the construction of the IPR, the distribution system for reclaimed water, will probably not follow the same alignment as the outfall pipe and the force main pipe. Another complication is separation requirements. We can't put them all in the same trench because there needs to be required separation between pipes of dissimilar levels of use. So, for example, there's a 10-foot separation requirement between water and sewer. You can get them a little closer together if you use alternative methods. We will likely be able to intercept this project before going out to bid with the reclaimed water line and include that in any contract work that we'd be going out to bid with. That's what our estimation is. But this work that we're approving tonight, or that we're requesting to be approved tonight, would only be the lift station, the force main getting the sewage from the terminus of the existing collection system, and the brine-outfall line back to the air relief structure.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Okay, great. Matt?
Rob, you brought up a good point about the WIFIA funding. In terms of the schedule with the WIFIA funding, knowing that we took a hiatus of a number of months with this project, do we just need to have this preliminary start to qualify for WIFIA, or do we have to go a certain distance in this process to get the information we need?
We need to have enough information to complete the environmental documents for WIFIA. Also, we also need to have in place a rate structure that will service that debt. So we'll need enough information so that we can look at the rates to either confirm our existing rates are satisfactory or increase those rates to service the debt. We will need both those factors in place. So we'll need enough, the plan is to get RFP or proposals back on the South Bay Boulevard site, all the site work, so that that can inform the rate analysis, and also to confirm pipeline routing, lift station location, so we can better refine the costs on the pipelines and lift station prior to going out with that rate analysis.
And when do you foresee that rate analysis starting?
Probably April, May of this next year.
So in terms of all of this, one thing, a question, where does the 218 vote fit into this timeline?
It's very tight. We need to have rates in place to service the debt prior to the July 17-ish application deadline. So Prop 218 will probably be in the first part of June timeframe when we advertise for that, maybe late May.
So you would think, given these different price analyses, that we would have enough from the rate analysis and the various price analyses from the different projects, we'll be able to put together a good enough analysis for a 218 vote?
Definitely. We have, we meet currently, the information that we have, we could base a rate analysis on that. We just are looking to refine those costs to bring down, our rate analysis right now would be based on engineers' opinion of probable costs, not on what we're expecting the guaranteed maximum price for the project to be.
Okay. Last question I have. In terms of being on schedule for this part of the project with this initial engineering phase of the lift station, how will this process go forward with Coastal Commission?
So we will prepare concept designs. We'll be working with Coastal, well, we'll be working with SCOT, actually. It's within the city's coastal jurisdiction. So at this point in time, the city would be the agency that would issue the coastal development permit. Now, it's appealable to Coastal Commission, but it will go through city planning commission and then to council to ultimately locally approve that coastal development permit. We ship that approval to Coastal, and then there's a 10-day tolling period?
Yeah, and Coastal will be engaged from the moment we start the process of permitting. So once the application's officially into planning, we'll be engaging Coastal from the beginning, just like we do on all of our projects along the Embarcadero and those types of things. We engage them early just so there's no issues moving forward, and it kind of facilitates the project. It's not going to be any different than sort of standard operating procedure for those types of things, and then Coastal appeals on.
I just want to emphasize that this project will not go to final design before we talk to anybody about permitting or environmental. That would be a foolish plan to do.
Got it. And last question. In terms of the existing lift station near the wastewater treatment plant now, how old is that? And then where would this new lift station be located in comparison?
So the existing lift station, we have three lift stations in town. One on the Embarcadero, right, will be neighbors to the Maritime Museum with that one. We have one out near Cloisters Park, and then one at the corner of Quintana and South Bay Boulevard. That lift station pumps mainly from the south end of town over to cross the creek and to the wastewater treatment plant. That will remain in service, as will the Cloisters lift station pumping mainly from sewage from north Morro Bay that can't make it via gravity to the wastewater treatment plant, just short of the wastewater. It breaks to gravity before we actually get to the wastewater treatment plant. And then the Quintana-South Bay lift station, we thought we had some opportunities to kind of turn that lift station around, but preliminary analysis shows that the cost to modify for construction is more than the 20 years' worth of energy savings. So it doesn't appear to be feasible to basically turn that lift station around and pump directly to the proposed preferred site at South Bay Boulevard. I didn't answer the second part of your question, sorry. Where will the new lift station be located? Through the WRF CAC process, we met with them, Black and Beach met with staff also. We're focusing on a couple of sites near the existing wastewater treatment plant. One is right near the, if you know, the corp yard, where the park's equipment shed is, kind of across the driveway from our old gas pumps in that general vicinity. And the other location would be across the street where there's, right now, there's some employee parking in that widened right-of-way area. That would be another potential location. As we move towards Highway 1 and 41 with a lift station location, it gets very deep to be able to feasibly construct something. And the only other really way to move the lift station maybe further inland And the only other really way to move the lift station maybe further inland and upland is to construct a few more smaller lift stations that would intercept that gravity flow that's already lower than the existing plant and pump it up to that lift station.
Matt, did you ask your question from the public comment? Did you get that question?
I did not, but I figure when we, because I see the little questions sitting in front of Rob there and I bet we're going to be going over it, so I'm having--
Or I can answer it right now if you prefer.
Well, no, you tell me what--
No, let's do it, yeah. Yeah, you had your question.
I think you have a lot of questions there and, but I, we have some other folks that want to, I mean, I'm more than, I don't mind being patient.
And I wasn't planning to work my way through every question here. I'm not sure which ones are most important to councils, so I was going to wait and respond to your questions rather than reading five pages worth of work here. But I will talk briefly about the LoSOSs and then if there's any follow-up questions. We have met with both county staff and the LoSOSs executive director for the, I think it's the Basin Management Committee out there. They do have some capacity in their water recycling facility. Unfortunately, it's not enough for us. It's, I think I have the numbers instead of-- They may have up to 462,000 gallons per day of excess plant capacity. Our average daily flows are in the 900,000 gallons per day. So there would be requirements to build additional plant capacity there. So basically, a second oxidation ditch would need to be constructed there. Additionally, about eight miles of pipeline and a major pump station would need to be constructed to deliver water over there. Speaking with the executive director, they're not sure if they have enough capacity in their Boarderson wellfields and their other injection sites to get that water into the ground to make meaningful use of that water. So they would be unsure whether they could actually make use of, if we sent our 900 and something average gallons per day over there, they might have to find a place to dispose of it, which they don't have an excess disposal. I think they're looking at a creek disposal right now, but that is still being reviewed. You know, additional things that they would need to do is construct flow equalization. Our peaks are higher than their peaks, so we have a, for example, a peak wet weather flow of about 8.1 million gallons per day. They would not have the capacity to handle that in their existing oxidation ditch, nor would they really want that in their, all at one time in their ox ditch. So they would need to construct flow equalization. So it doesn't appear to be feasible to pursue that at this point in time.
And in terms of, when you talk about our daily flow of the 970,000 gallons per day, that does exclude kayugas?
That does exclude kayugas, but it does include build-out.
That does include build-out, but that does not include our rain, when rain--
No, that's average daily flow.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
John?
Thanks, Rob, for the presentation, as always, and the information. So when I think about the whole thing, I come down to one major question, but I have more. And the real bottom-line question for me is this, is there a chance when we go out for RFQ for the wastewater treatment facility, water reclamation facility, that the results of that could inform a different lift station slash piping system that you're proposing that we begin designing now?
I'm trying to envision a case where that could possibly occur, and the only case I can envision is if council decides not to use the South Bay Boulevard site. If, for example, something were to happen and you envisioned the site at Rigetti or Rancho Colina or any of the other 17 sites that we've looked at, that could change some of the hydraulics of the, and the direction of the force main. I don't see preliminarily any constraints on the South Bay Boulevard site environmentally, through the environmental review process, that would stop us from constructing a project there.
So in terms of them, the potential responders to the RFP when that goes out, realizing that we spoke to a couple of meetings ago, the need for innovative design opportunities from those that respond and not a quote-unquote necessarily a response to the existing full master plan, but there might be responses that would be different than that, that would achieve all of the goals. I guess I need to feel real comfortable that, and again, not being an engineer, that there isn't something out there that I'm not aware of that might come back and inform us, maybe not from a site change or location recommendation, but from a technology recommendation that would preclude the need for the lift station and/or the piping. That's, I guess, a refined question of the question.
Okay. So the existing terminus of the wastewater collection system is on Tuscadara Road near our existing wastewater treatment plant, about three miles from South Bay Boulevard. So we need to get the wastewater from that location to South Bay Boulevard. Typically, the way you get that there is with pumps and pipe. I, in literature, professional societies, I haven't heard of, nobody's talked about alternative means of conveying wastewater between two locations, but building a, now there are different configurations of lift stations. Waterworks Engineering has gone over this with, on how to best optimize a lift station, how best to optimize the pipe, whether it's, they put two parallel pipes in instead of one single pipe, you know, are there energy savings to be achieved from that? Those items will be investigated in the preliminary design as part of this, this contract, but I don't see anything in the RFP, any innovative ways of conveying wastewater from one place to another without a pump and a pipe.
Good. And I know that's obvious to you, but, you know, I'm not an engineer and it's, and I kind of get that concept, but who knows what's out there scientifically and what the possibilities are. So that helps a lot with, with my understanding of the need for this. I guess my, my next question would be, or, yeah, it's a question. Absent a change in location of the plant, this absolutely will have to be done, the lift station and piping, given the fact that we're going to have respondents to the RFP, it's going to be required?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's another way to ask the same question.
Correct. We need to convey the wastewater from the existing spot to the new spot, so they will need to complete construction at about the same time so that when we turn things on, we are pumping wastewater to the new plant and we can decommission and abandon our old plant.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry to ask it three times in a different way, but, but it's, to me, it's a bottom-line question for, for understanding this. So just a couple of other questions. If we don't do this now, would we absolutely lose WIFIA or SRF funding if we delayed making a decision on this project?
I don't think we could put together a complete application for WIFIA without understanding some of the preliminary work. We won't be completed with this project before the WIFIA application is.
Totally understand, right.
We'll need some of that preliminary work to refine the environmental review so we can submit that data to EPA that's performing the NEPA work and also to refine those cost estimates for, that'll inform the rate analysis. So as with all city contracts, there's a way out. We have a termination clause. So if things do not go as planned and something goes completely sideways, we're not getting the WIFIA, they don't like our application, let's say, we have a chance to terminate contracts and rethink things. So we don't, we don't have to go the full length of the contract to get out of it. I'm not saying that that would actually hap, I think Waterworks Engineers are actually here listening to this, so that's, that wouldn't be my plan to do.
I just want to be sure that that's possible if you're out there in the audience--
Yeah, they know that, they've read that in our standard contract.
And you said that in your report.
Yes.
And, and let me just say, when I mention project, I'm talking about your proposal for design, not the completed project.
Correct.
So I didn't mean for anybody to think the construction and everything--
Well, even before we get to final design, we'll have some preliminary work done that will inform our WIFIA application, our SRF application and our EIR.
And the loss of that funding obviously is huge in terms of debt load. My calculation was 87 million in differential for interest rates and, I don't know if you have a new calculation, but, but it's huge.
It is very huge. If, I think if we just lost WIFIA and not SRF, it's about half of that, but what we've been told by SRF is they're overcommitted and they're looking for partners to fund projects. And EPA is a good partner to partner with on funding of water and wastewater projects.
So a council member should be strung up if, if they did something that caused the loss of a WIFIA or SRF funding, wouldn't you think? I mean--
I don't have a comment about that, I'll leave that to you five to decide.
That's a good response, Rob.
Yeah, so are we paying project managers for any aspect of this design oversight, our project management team?
They will be involved in review of plans, some QC work, as will our internal staff. As you will see in December, we're proposing some restructuring of the project management team, so perhaps some lesser involvement, but yes, we, we have a small city staff. It doesn't make sense to have a big engineering department for one project, so we contract for engineering work that we need to have done. Right now, I'm the only civil engineer in the department, so--
I get it. I just had to ask the question.
Yeah, okay.
I assumed it, thank you. And, and you did say, I think you said, this is not a critical path item with regard to the, the construction of the WW, well, the treatment facility and the WRF?
There are portions of this project that are on the critical path for funding, but not for, the design work is getting closer to being on the critical path, but if we were to, there is still some float available or some time available on this portion of the project. Really, the critical path items are environmental review and funding.
And you said in, in one of the answers, you, you sent us some questions that one of the council members had asked and the answers to those, and I'm just going to read it, it says, "If the contract authorization, this contract, is delayed, you anticipate negative impacts to the overall project schedule?"
Yes.
Okay. And time is money.
Correct.
So that would be costly to us as a city, would it not?
In my opinion, yes, it would be.
Okay, if we delayed this, okay. And, and the last question for me is, if this were delayed, what do you anticipate the escalation costs to be to do this later? What would you assume they might be? Is there an average percentage?
It's, we've seen heavy construction costs in California go up about, even through the recession, on average, 4% per year. Right now, we're getting into an unfortunate time if you're on the building side of these things because the economy is a little bit better. Caltrans is going to be, building a huge amount of heavy construction projects. It's, the issue is labor force. Is there enough construction workers to meet the demand of multiple projects going on? It's a very big concern of ours with this design-build process, and that's why, one of the reasons in the, a little off-subject, in the SOQ, we want the design builder to have 50% of self-performance. They can bring, they can control that labor market that way.
Rob, I just, just remind people in SOQ or for listeners and things like that--
SOQ is a statement of qualifications. The RFQ is the request that went out to get that statement of qualifications.
Thank you. No more questions.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Rob. Marla's?
Sure. I just wanted to follow up on, actually, this is a question that Mr. Heller raised or a comment that he made, and I just want to clarify that the project management, they're not, they're not paid based on a percent of the project. Is that--
No, no. We, we get proposals and council approves contracts for a time and materials contract not to exceed a maximum amount.
Right. So the confusion is that there is a percent based in the budget, but that's just for estimation purposes, it's not--
That's for estimating purposes only. When we actually go out for that work, so when we go out for construction management, we'll get a proposal with a estimated fee in that. As you notice, I did not call it a bid because for professional services, we do not, in California, we do not bid professional services. We, it's qualifications-based selection, I'm a little bit on my soapbox now, but, and we negotiate a price.
Okay. And, and then just to follow up, this contract that we're currently considering is the same type of contract. It's time and materials.
It's time and materials not to exceed a maximum amount without prior authorization.
Right. So all of the anticipated costs are currently in there, so all the subcontractors that they were, they're planning on using are included in there.
Correct.
And I know that I had some concerns about the fact that we had 10 workshops and I couldn't imagine where we could possibly, how we could possibly conduct 10 workshops, but you clarified that for me and--
And let me re-clarify that a little bit.
Yes, please, thank you.
So some, many of those workshops will be held with staff. So instead of receiving a technical memorandum on a particular design component, we will meet with them, they will present that to us, we will review it in the presentation and then they will compile the results in a final design report. We found that much more efficient than, we're all busy, than them submitting a report to us for us to review and get back to them at some later time. If they force us kind of to go through it, it happens much quicker, compresses the time schedule on, and we've had a lot of success doing these workshops. In addition to the workshops, we do have opportunities for Waterworks Engineering to present to our WRFCAC and City Council and Planning Commission at the key needed times.
Junction, right.
But not on design details of a particular flavor of pump or whether two pipelines is more efficient hydraulically than one.
Right. And so really, it's not just-- Right. And so really, it's not just workshops, it's meetings. It's any kind of presentation where it requires a presentation.
Correct.
And if we don't have that many...
We don't pay for that many.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure that we understood. So could you just talk a little bit about how you got down to these two alternatives for both the lift station and the pipeline design? Because obviously, you must have at some point considered others. And so how do we get down to two?
Sure. We were assisted by our Facilities Master Plan, Black and Beach, the professional engineers on their team. And we looked at eight, I think, sites for lift stations in and around that general area. As far east as around where the New Sonic is going to be and across the street from there. We looked on the vacant piece of property next to the entrance to the high school. We looked in and around the existing wastewater treatment plant site. Really, what dictated the decision to look at these two final sites was the depth of the wet well facilities to construct at a reasonable price. So the further you get away from where the collection system is, the deeper the wet well needs to be. So we are minimizing costs by keeping it near where the collection system comes together existing. Pipeline routing, we requested that Black and Beach look at a couple of different routes. One on the east side of the highway, traveling overland through the, kind of the Ratcliffe neighborhood, and then overland to the WRF site. And then the other alternative was Quintana, basically out to South Bay. And then, in the interview process, one of the other engineering teams brought up another recommendation that we will be considering in the final, and that is perhaps looking at going down the Embarcadero. There are some constraints with that. It's very busy there, and finding the right timing to do that may prove impossible. But there could be some key savings by doing that. We also have a collections system project that's been on the books for a while to repair the gravity line that exists in the Embarcadero. Whatever method that finally gets chosen through the workshops review with WRF CAC and council will be the lowest-cost alternative.
Okay. And I know I submitted a number of questions to you ahead of time, so I'm not planning on going through all of those. You've answered them. But I think, you know, the critical one that I think the community is concerned about is, what are the risks for moving forward with this now, given that we haven't finalized the land sale with LAFCO? So could you just explain the risks of moving forward without having some of those things nailed down, the Coastal Commission approval of lift stations, et cetera, and where we're kind of at with those things, so we have a better sense of what the remaining risks might be?
Sure. So ideally, we might wait until we get everything done and perform it in a serial operation, or one right after the other. Unfortunately, we have a couple of time constraints not working on our side. I think John Piero-Wolff stated in his presentation from the Regional Board that time is not our friend with this project. We have a looming decision coming next month in December on our existing permit, which will set up the time schedule order for getting this project completed. And that will be up to five years. They haven't promised they will actually give us five years, but we believe that they will, up to five years to complete this project. The other more pressing time schedule is the funding timeframe. It is significant, the additional costs in going from subsidized funding, the WIFIA and SRF funding, to municipal bonds. So those are our time constraints. So to meet those time constraints, we are taking risk. We're operating on a parallel path. We need the information from the design work to feed into the EIR that we're already starting. And in my opinion, it's a necessary risk to be able to meet those absolute, the absolute funding deadline, excuse me, for the EPA WIFIA money. And we believe that it puts us in a better position for the other subsidized pot of money, which is SRF funding.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Heading asked some of the other critical questions that we had, which is, we can obviously, short of changing the site, which I suppose, if some drastic thing were to happen, that's the biggest risk.
Yes, it is. But based on what we know now, we don't believe that there is risk in changing the site locations.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. I just want to clarify your last statement, risk in site locations. And you started out by saying why we're here. And just to reinforce that, we're here because in September 26, we went through all the analysis to determine that South Bay Boulevard site was the most cost-effective site moving forward, after analyzing two potential sites west of Highway 1, Rancho Colina site on Highway 41, Riquetti on 41, and South Bay Boulevard. Based on timing, litigation, Coastal Commission, any of those decisions, timing being the one critical factor, South Bay Boulevard was the most, the highest potential site for us to deliver a completed project, the most cost-effective. That's how I understood how we got here.
Correct. But I think Mr. Panoni would correct me if I said, "That is our site that we're going to build on until the EIR is certified."
Right. And those are things that we need to reinforce time and again in our discussions, because we have chosen that as our preferred site location. We're moving forward on the EIR, Environmental Impact Report. Part of that impact, Environmental Impact Report, is the very completion of the contract in which we're discussing. That's one of the critical components.
Yes.
Correctly. And then, the EIR also ties into the WIFIA loan, which is in the application process, which we have, we want, as we chose this, we made the choice to prove, pardon me, to take the path of an accelerated schedule. And this is part of that, is that so far?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So that's kind of my why. I just wanted to go back through that. And on the particular contract, if, I'm looking at the contract that's in our packet, and I met with you and talked with you through some of those today, particular site alternatives evaluation, which is interesting because we've done analysis, and in our staff report, and the proposal for task two is, there's two sites, Site 1A and Site 5A, including... I want to understand that we've done our analysis, we being our current project engineering group. Wouldn't it be prudent for Water Works Engineering to confirm that and do another analysis on, did we do all the analysis and consider all the creative ways to understand what our alternatives are? In other words, and I know you've explained this, whether or not the depths, depending on where the collections are. I know you explained, hey, the Quintana site, well, I thought we can turn that around, but we can't. But I just want to understand that we've done that, but this is the opportunity, as we're designing this, to have our independent analysis, to go through those exact same things, and conclude that, yep, these two sites are the ones we need to go through. I just want to, because that language isn't specifically in the scope of work, but I just want to, in fact, you and I talked about including, you know, an additional task on there to ensure that we do that. And then, having said that, if we're adding tasks onto a scope that is before us, I'm imagining that would change the...
The fee.
The fee. And so, these are things, you know, obviously, it's been presented to us, and these are discussions that we need to have. But that's the general question on whether or not that type of analysis will be confirmed or completed as part of this.
So as the scope is envisioned, there's not a, they don't explain, we didn't explain, nor do they talk about exactly what will take place in there. Now, we can work with Water Works Engineering to work within our existing scope and have them review that information. Or should you want to approve this tonight, we could discuss this with them during our, should it be approved tonight, during our kickoff meeting in the morning, and see what that scope modification would be, prepare a proposed change order, and run that through the process, to see whether it's viable to discuss that. Now, their project management team is in the audience, and if you would like us to bring them up, to have them maybe answer that question better than I'm doing right now, we can do that.
Sure. So we'll go through the questions. We'll take public comment, and then maybe during discussion, we can, if we get to that, and council wants to have that, entertain that, maybe we could do that then.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Cool. And then, I think we'll get to a lot of the questions, or great questions from council on what took place earlier. The other, I feel as though we should probably start into the public comment at this time, and we can probably roll into discussion to cover some of our other points. So, pardon me, for that, I think, unless there are any other questions, I'll just move into public comment portion of this.
There was, I forgot. I'm sorry. There was one public comment made by Mr. Simons that pertained to this, that wasn't addressed. I don't think we addressed it.
Okay.
Maybe important that I could just have Rob address. The note I took was that in the current scope of work, there's no schematic plan, artist's rendering, and he named some other things. And he thought that it wasn't enough for vetting by the Coastal Commission. Could you address the comments that he made? And maybe somebody took more extensive notes on that, but he did specifically refer to this item and was concerned about it going to Coastal and not having those items.
Yes. So we have a task where we are looking at site alternatives evaluation. We've already done some preliminary site layouts and potential architecture with our Facilities Master Planning that would be included in our discussions with Coastal. Let me see how to put this. It is a sewer lift station. It'll have a below-grade wet well, a control building with an overhead crane, probably a generator and a fence. It's... I believe that we'll have enough information through the preliminary analysis to provide that to Coastal to review.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we addressed his comment. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks. With that, I think we'll just, we'll jump into public comment at this point. So first up, Carol Truesdale, and then Jeff Heller. Thanks, Carol.
Honorable Mayor, Council, and City Staff, Item C2, and welcome Scott Collins to Morro Bay. I'm Carol Truesdale, a resident of North Morro Bay since 1995 and a homeowner. I'm here to ask you not to enter into any contract with the design of the proposed lift station for the following reasons. Where is the EIR for this project? Has the City of Morro Bay received an approved LCP amendment to the Morro Bay WRF building team with respect to land use? I think it might be considered heavy industrial. And what about collaborating with the CCRW QCB and the CCC, discussing a sewer, what they call a sanitary sewer overflow, or SSO, for the proposed lift station? I really think we're putting the cart before the horse. It all boils down to one thing. The object of moving the sewer plant inland is to reduce the risk of flood damage that would render the plant inoperable and result in a serious sewer spills. The theory is that by moving the plant out of the flood zone and away from the ocean, the object will be accomplished. It won't. If the lift station fails, the plant fails. It simply is that. By moving the sewer plant to South Bay Boulevard site, the citizens and property owners would be paying huge sewer bills to cover this ridiculously expensive plant and the excessive cost of pumping all of that sewage to the plant. The only difference would be higher costs and absolutely no reduction of risk. What about our aging sewer lines that are leaking sewage constantly all over town? Why are we spending all of this money for consultants for an expensive sewer plant when the pipes in our own homes are less than ideal for the existing plant? Shouldn't we be prudent and correct in already aging sewer line system? The project costs for this sewer system will push many citizens and some businesses out of Morro Bay because they cannot afford to live or do business here. Some of these people are longtime residents. This will change the demographics of this city, which is just not right or ethical. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Jeff Heller?
Before I forget, welcome to the new staff members here. It's fun, isn't it? Well, maybe not. A couple of things I wanted to mention here. One is just a kind of a question. The budget for this line item, which was approved a few months ago, was $1.2 million. The proposed contract is almost $1.5 million, 20% above the approved budget. It was just a few months, approved just a few months ago. My question to the council is, do you question your staff on why that's 20% above the budget number? Is there any interior, internal discussion with the consultants on why the budget is so much higher than the particular line item? Or do you just figure, well, we were close at 20% over, and we're going to approve it? I'm curious about how that process works. My big concern with awarding this contract, and I recommend that you don't at this time, is risk. Now, we talked about some of the minor risk items, but the big risk item, in my opinion, to the city and the ratepayers, is failure to making the entire system, the plant, the piping, the lift station, making the entire system designed and constructed by a design-build entity. The implication of not doing that is, well, you have the plant, and that's design-build. Something goes wrong, one phone call. What if something goes wrong with the lift station and the piping? That's another phone call. Then there's finger pointing about why we have a problem, which is the classic conflict in construction defects. And that's why the design-build approach came about, was that you have one legal entity, you have the design team, working with contractors, trying to find the best, most efficient way. That entity is liable for the life of the project. By breaking off this portion of it, which is tens of millions of dollars, I suppose, you're exposing the city to long-term risk needlessly just to get the financing. Now, I think good financing is worth pursuing, but pursuing it by spending a million and a half dollars on design, which is going to be built by home, you won't know what that portion of the work is going to cost because you haven't talked to contractors. You're going to have more engineering estimates on what you think it'll cost. You're not moving, you may get financing, but you're not moving closer to real cost, and you're exposing the city to long-term liability by failing to use the design-build concept. I would propose perhaps reducing the contract and see if maybe 20% of that work could be done in order to get the EIR approved and get conceptual approval from the Coastal Commission. But going forward, the full design of the project at this point exposes the city needlessly to unnecessary risk. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Barry Brannon, and then David Nelson.
Barry Brannon, Morro Bay. I won't be talking about the contract. Mr. Medlewski talked about the Los Osos situation. I'd like to go to that. The Los Osos project was designed for a little over a million gallons a day. They used the same consultants to come up with their flows and loads as we use to come up with our flows and loads. up with their flows and loads, as we use to come up with our flows and loads. And here we are, their plant's running, and their volume is exactly half of what it was designed for. If you go over there, half of the plant is unused. They're actually begging for water to run that plant properly. My point is, I believe, and I'll put for the record, that the projections that we're making for Morro Bay's water are probably off by at least 50%, and here's the reason why. Their volumes dropped as their cost of water went up. As your ratepayers' cost goes up, they use less. They use less water, they stop their outside irrigation, and they're, all their volumes dropped. And if we build a plant that's going to do what we're doing, and then we go around and stop the infiltration, we're going to have the same problem. We're going to have a very expensive plant. So, I think that Mr. Livick respectfully used the common engineering term called a "wag," an engineering that's called a wild-ass guess. I think he guessed at those volumes because that's what his consultants gave him. And the consultants missed by 100% the volumes of Los Osos. I have the records, you can ask them, you can review it. So, the same people told us what we were going to do, and I believe, five years from now, we're going to have the same problem.
Thanks, Barry. David Nelson.
Hi, David Nelson, Morro Bay. My instinct is to stand here and just scream. I can't believe we're sitting through this, doing this. I mean, we're being scared that we're running out of time. We're running out of time because you're, you know, Einstein talked about insanity as doing the same thing over and over, and that's what we're seeing here. I mean, this is insane. I mean, what we're talking about doing is building this lift station, that whoever's going to build that other thing, as Mr. Heller was going into, we're going to guarantee that that's going to work. If it doesn't, if there's some screw-up along the way, and how could that happen here, huh? So, there's a screw-up, and who's going to be responsible? Well, you guys built that, so you have to do it. I want to see somebody like Perk come in here and say, "I'm going to permit it, I'm going to design it, and I'm going to put it online for you, and this is your cost." They did that. We dumped it because of the same insanity. We're dealing with these people that just want money. I want a car, you want a car. You guys want to go out and buy every part from whoever's selling it to you, and I want to go in and just buy at the best price I can get for the best car I can get. Your way of doing it is going to cost you four times what a real car will cost you in real money, if you go to the dealer and buy your parts. That's what you're trying to do here. You're trying to design a sewer system based on hired guns that have grandiose ideas, instead of a company that builds a sewer wastewater treatment plant, and they can show it to you, and they can say, "Look, I have the crew, we can do this, we'll build our own lift station, we'll take it so it runs." How can you justify what you're doing? Gambling this, and I'm telling you, gambling, because there's people, and I know we're being ignored, I see that some of the Council people are coming around and at least thinking about what people are saying up here. I want a new sewer plant, I want a good sewer plant. I've been using this sewer for over half my life. We need to change it, but we need something right. We don't need to design it, we don't need to be told by engineers that we have to do it this way. And the way you're doing it, as was just spoken on, is putting us in jeopardy. All we want is a sewer plant. We don't want engineers to come into our town. We want, we want, we want ideas, we want people to come and give us ideas. We don't want qualifications. Get the information, a request for information should be your first step. You don't even talk about it. If you send it out, we have all, we've paid for all the research that we need to put out for a request for information, not qualification, information. We need a different project. Shut it down, don't spend a million, oh, wait, you kept it under a million and a half dollars.
Linda Donnelly. Linda Donnelly, and then Bob Keller. Linda?
Good evening. How's everybody tonight? Welcome, Mr. Collins. So, a little dramatic tonight, but anybody know what this is? Can, who can tell me what this is? Who has this sitting in their living room or on their shelf? Anybody? It's the draft Water Reclamation Facility Master Plan. It was put out a year ago, was given to the Wolf CAC to review, but they never finished it, and they never got another chance to look at it, to have a meeting about it, or anything. Okay. Had to get that out because it's been on my living room for a year. And the reason I bring it up is because the things that are mentioned in this draft are in the proposal that the guy, that the people that you're talking to, to bring a project to the city, are using a draft, hasn't even been adopted by the city yet. I don't know if you guys know about that. Anyway, I have all these questions. The City Council was promised that at its October 24th regular meeting, the award of this, of this contract tonight, to design a lift station and pipelines would be on that agenda. So, does that mean we've slipped the schedule already? I think so. According to the attached proposal on Page 117 in Item C2, workshops are to start tomorrow. How will the public be notified? Where is the public outreach promised? Where will this workshop tomorrow be held? I know I wasn't here earlier, I was listening online, but I haven't heard any mention of the workshops coming. The proposal indicates that two and three-quarters of a mile-long pipeline from the South Bay Boulevard WRF site would only go to the ocean outfall. How is that concept considered reuse? Can the city obtain WIFIA assistance without the water reuse component being included now? What is the final project description for the entire project, and I think we've been asking that for months now? Does it include the injection wells in Morro Creek? There are 245 days remaining to submit the WIFIA application. However, the last council meeting before that deadline is seven days prior to the deadline. So, the city really only has 238 days left to complete everything on the WIFIA checklist. And Matt, this is the WIFIA checklist. It's available online. And the city must include the following when it submits the final, in July.
Thanks, Linda.
That's it? That's a shame. I'll have to start writing these things out and submitting them via email.
Bob Keller?
My name's Bob Keller. I'm a Morro Bay resident. I think this project started over 10 years ago. Does anybody remember, maybe longer? But I've only been involved with it maybe the last six years. And I think we've given it a lot of time, because we started out with 17 sites, and I think we're down maybe to some preferred sites. Anyway, now that we have a preferred site, the South Bay Boulevard, it's time to move on with the WRF project, because we've got a lot of risks involved. We don't move on now. So, because we have risks with deadlines to meet, with different agencies, maybe the Water Quality Control Board, and also, we have a timeline to meet some of our commitments, like loans and stuff like that, so we don't get the high interest rates. Our top priority is to keep the cost in line and affordable for all citizens of Morro Bay. And I think ways to do this is just, we have to ask for a staff to use hard-nosed negotiations and really crunch numbers. Research all funding agencies and grant opportunities, especially grant, it's free money, it won't cost us anything. Few examples is to make the WRF affordable, nonprofit foundations, interesting in keeping our environment safe and clean. The EPA agency, maybe it could help out, I'm not sure. But anyway, also, government agencies that support programs concerning global warming and Clean Air Acts, grants maybe there. Especially the low-interest loans that could go away if we don't meet our deadlines for this, federal and state governments. And also, the Bay Area, Bay Area has Silicon Valley, and they're in our backyard. I don't know why do we don't tap that area. And I think we could, I don't know what it costs to get, to have people research to how to get grants and money and funding, but we have a lot of volunteers, a lot of talented people in this area, in the county and city. Maybe we can get them for less money, not to pay all consultants and stuff like that, but to get people to research for funding, to keep our costs down, and make this project affordable, because we need a good quality plant. And our time is getting short, and we've already been working on this for a long time, and I think we should start getting down and think about the time. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. That's all the speaker slips I have. Without any more speaker slips or public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back to Council. Thanks for that. To start us off in discussion, Marle, do you want to start us off in discussion? Do we need to take a little recess before we go into discussion, a little recess before we go into discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take just a short recess, and then we'll come back for discussion. Okay, welcome back, thanks. Before we get started, you know, just from Council perspective, you know, there's a couple of questions that, and Rob alluded to inviting Waterworks Engineering up, and just wanted to just confer with Council on inviting them out there. If we want to just kind of do any of those particular type of questions now, we can just focus on those, conclude, and then get into the discussion. So, just want to confer with everybody on that, that methodology, looking for okie dokie. Okay? Maybe we can invite our Waterworks Engineering folks up.
So, we have Mike Fisher and Sammy Kader from Waterworks Engineering here, that are going to come up and talk about some of the work that they'll do to confirm previous work before they invest a lot in the locations.
Okay, thanks. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Irons, Council. Thank you for the time. My name's Mike Fisher, I'm with Waterworks Engineers. Sammy Kader, another one of the managing members with Waterworks Engineers, is here as well. I'm going to go ahead and hit on this one particular question that came up related to the site alternatives evaluation, which is listed as Task 2 in our, in our scope of work. The question came up as to alternate sites for the lift station, whether it would be beneficial to look at those additional sites again. One of the things we often do in a project like this, when you have as detailed of a, you know, draft plan as you have now with the Water Reclamation Facility, had a very good detailed analysis of the alternatives within it. However, even in that situation, any good engineering practice includes looking back at existing background documentation, and making sure that there wasn't something missed through a change in conditions, or through, just in some cases, there, there can be a situation where a new piece of information's come up that would inform those original decisions. And so, we'll definitely do within the alternatives evaluation, although not specifically listed here due to page, you know, page limitations and things like that. I didn't specifically put in the scope of work that we would be evaluating background documentation. But we would be doing that, and specific to all eight of the sites, we would look at all eight of those original lift station sites. I will say, we've done enough work at this point. We feel comfortable saying that those two sites do look at this point in time to be the most likely locations, given several of the items that Mr. Livick identified. Those continue to be the most likely two sites. However, it would definitely be worthwhile to spend the time to look at those additional sites, and we will do that as part of the background portion of our alternatives assessment.
And since I started with this one question, thank you for coming up and responding to that. I guess the other part of that is that regardless of looking at the analysis of all the sites, would be, I would assume, looking at the entire conveyance system and confirm, you know, that there is, did we look at all the, did we explore all the alternatives? And I'm asking that there, you know, is that type of thought process in there? And then I would expect, you know, if that analysis was really, really whittled down, and, you know, we said, "Oh, you know what? We did identify something that, and we need to do a deeper dive into that." That would either mean we need to confer with our project manager and say, "Look, this is what we've come up with at one of our," and I think there was some comments about workshops, and I think we need to re-identify what the, what those, that's kind of the scope of work is, and then, you know, whether or not that would entail, okay, this is something we need to look at expanding the scope of work based on this data, or we're going to be within, you know, the scope and the work product that we've been approved to do.
Yeah, so, one of the drivers is the physical geography behind the layout of the system. And one of the things that drives that is the location of the current plant. All the existing system drains to that location. So, that tends to be the location where the most likely sites will be from a cost, a high-level cost analysis. However, looking to your original question, looking beyond that to make sure there wasn't an alternative location that was missed, or the, again, the potential of utilizing existing infrastructure to maximize its potential moving forward. For example, building onto the existing lift station, influent pump station. Enough of a discussion with staff to make sure that's been vetted, so you can reuse existing infrastructure where that might save capital investment for the city. That would definitely be something we'd work through. And these workshops that we refer to, we use that nomenclature because it allows us to recognize a condition where we're working interactively with our clients, to produce an end result that takes less time than it would to produce a technical memo to get the same, get to the same endpoint. They're not what we would consider public workshops. Those are a different item that are addressed in our Task 1, our project management. So, that's to give, go back to your question about the difference between those two. That's why those may not be labeled that way.
Yeah, and I think for us, I think, you know, I think Marle, and myself, and maybe the rest on Council, same way, we recognize that terminology in one way, and our community, obviously, another. So, it was, you know, just something that even needed to be clarified.
Call it meetings in the future.
Yeah. Are there any other questions for, to my left, to my right, for Mike? I'm just remembering your first name, Mike, and then Sammy. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Thanks very much, appreciate it. Thanks, Rob. And with that, let's, we can start off with discussion. And John, you want to start off with the talking points or your discussion points at this part? Thanks.
Thank you. So, first, I just want to make some macro comments. You know, I continue to hear input, and I think rightly so, from the community about challenging the South Bay site. I get that. And I hear information presented and about the high cost of that. And, you know, we have gone over that a number of times, and in terms of reasonable alternatives, you know, I'm, I am highly convinced through the letter and my follow-up discussion with the Coastal Commission staff, myself personally, that we can spend years trying to go to the Coastal Commission to build at a site that currently exists on the west side of Highway 1, and it ain't going to happen. And so, I'm done with that conversation, and it's okay to hear that testimony, and for the public to come up and continue to present that. But I am telling you right now, given the information that I have, and I've- the information that I have, and I've spent a lot of hours vetting this, speaking directly, not only with our staff, but with Coastal Commission staff, I am convinced that it is not going to happen, and it's nothing more than a stall tactic to try to not get anything to happen, possibly to keep rates at where they're at. The other thing is that time is money, and the longer we put off doing literally anything is costing us money. However, we must do the right thing to minimize the cost to the community, or we will price people out of the market. I get that. I get the demographics. I'm firmly behind that. At the last meeting, we changed our goals, and we addressed our goal number one, to make this project economically viable and feasible for the in-line rate payer. And I personally, and I believe this council will do anything that it can to build a reasonable plant that will allow us to achieve that end by whatever means it takes to get there as quickly as possible. So I just want to start with that. Second, the reason I would hesitate tonight approving anything is that this council has not seen, and I cannot place any blame on our current new staff members, any financial information or updates on the WF project for months. I can't sit here and approve tonight a budget, a budgeted item that will exceed the 1718 allocation and take money from a future allocation that's budgeted without having a full picture of what currently is going on with regard to the financials of our WRF project. I, in goodwill and in good, in good decision-making capacity, cannot do that. Our CFAC committee has not had the opportunity to vet it. However, more importantly, we kept the WRFCAC committee. Specifically, one of the major reasons was because they have a financial subcommittee that is charged with looking at the costs and the budget associated with the WRF project. And they have not had a chance to report to us or look at any information. So my major constraint tonight isn't that I do not support this, because I think the issue really, folks, is funding. If we do not get WFIya funding or SRF funding, you can be assured that you will be priced out of the market. The debt service cost, I'm just like a broken record saying this to folks that are out there, the debt service cost associated with not getting that funding is close to $100 million in excess costs, just the cost of money, not the plant, has nothing to do with the plant, it's the cost of money. And I will do anything to expedite the project to meet the goal of obtaining the WFIya funding and the SRF funding according to the timelines that I believe the staff has very well spelled out, and I have bought into and firmly believe in. Otherwise, we're left out there without any opportunity in the near future for funding of this project. Besides that, we will be susceptible to fines from the Water Board, State Water Board. They've been here, they're not playing games. They have the ability to heavily leverage fines against us because we're non-compliant, the last plant in the state to be compliant with the regulations that have been established. And so I support moving forward with this project because of the information that I believe to be true in terms of achieving the goal of this being necessary for funding and realizing that funding. However, I would ask that we consider waiting two weeks and agendize this and carry it over to the next meeting that would allow us to look at a financial update on the current project, where we are, and I probably doesn't give time for WRFCAC to have a chance to look at it, but at least we would have the opportunity to look at that. And so although I am in support of moving forward with this, I do not think waiting two weeks will cause a delay unless Mr. Leibig tells me that it will, and it's impossible, and we shouldn't do this, without seeing where we are financially at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Marlese?
Sure.
Okay. Just want to raise one point, there is no meeting scheduled for two weeks because of the holiday, so it'd be four weeks.
Four weeks. Yeah. We'll address that. Thanks. Okay?
All right. Well, I appreciate many of Mr. Heding's comments, because I think we really have been through a very lengthy process, and I think we've been trying really hard to listen to the community and to try to get the cost of this project down, and we are firmly committed as a council to doing that in every way that we can. I think initially, when I looked at this contract, I shared some of the concerns that have been raised by many of the citizens. In particular, I recognize that we need to do this, but I was concerned about, is this the right time to do it? Shouldn't we wait? But I was very much persuaded by the answers that I received, that it's important to move forward with this as quickly as we can. I don't really think we can afford to waste any more time. If we really want to meet the WFIya loan, we cannot stop and pause any longer. We've just got to keep moving. My understanding of the amount of this contract is that it is in the budget. It is in the current budget at $1.2 million, and that at least $182,000, I believe, is not going to be completed in this budget year, but will be completed at some point in the future. And so we know, Mr. Leibig has explained to us that we do have the money in the fund, in the super fund, to pay for this. It is part of the budget. I recognize that we would like to get a financial update, and I'm assured that we're going to be getting one quickly. But I believe it is within the accepted budget, so, and it's a time and materials contract, so we are only going to be paying for what we get. And I know there's some risks, but I think that the bigger risk is delaying again and putting the WFIya loan in jeopardy, so I would support moving forward with it.
Thanks, Marlese. Matt?
Well, I appreciate the comments made by John and Marlese collectively. I do believe, in terms of this project, the last six months, we've had a peer review, we've put it a hiatus of sorts, we've put the project on pause, we've investigated quite a bit of various aspects of the project, not to mention the last few years in terms of the 17 sites, et cetera, et cetera. Timing is of the essence in my mind. I'm very scared and leery of the cost to our residents. Some of you are a little bit older than I, I've got a little bit, hopefully, longer to live, so I'm going to be paying these a little bit longer than you. So, I mean, that's a concern.
Wow.
Well, I hope, okay, I'm crossing my fingers, all right? But we also agreed in the last few months, in terms of this accelerated timing, we have to do a lot of these things in conjunction simultaneously, and knowing that there is a risk. But part of that was, we go back to funding, and this is the big one. I mean, we have so many residents in the room right now, and that have spoken to this a number of times over the past months and years, that this is huge, and I think to a person on this council, we are very cognizant of that. And so with that, I'm in agreement with Marlese. I understand the risks, and I do agree with the people who talked about, we go from 1.2 million to 1.382. However, it's spread out over time, and given the larger issue here with this project, I think the price is worth it to go forward with it.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
I did the same math that Marlese did, and the difference between the 1.2 million this year and the future expenditure for the same project comes to, is the reason that it is over, appears to be over this year's budgeted project. In fact, it is within this year's budget. I agree with Dr. Heding that I will do anything to move this project forward as, in an expeditious manner, so that we do not lose the low-cost funding. And I think any member of this community who wants to keep the cost down as they say they want to do, must agree that we have to accelerate this project. We have spent years investigating every possible permutation, and the time is now that we must act. So I am ready to vote tonight to award this project and keep moving as quickly as we can.
Thanks, Red. I will agree with everyone's comments. I would support moving forward. I appreciate the comments from, from all those, both public speakers and council, on where we're going on this, and just want to reiterate some of those as well. But I want to back up to September 26, when we made that final preferred site location. Part of that discussion, we said we needed to accelerate this. We also talked, following that, we talked about, okay, what does that acceleration, accelerated process look like? We talked about what are, what are our critical decision points? And I'm looking at Rob as we go through this, because there's going to be times where we have a finance committee, and I would contend that, you know, our CFAC, the original purpose of our CFAC was, you know, the budget document. We have a finance committee within our WRFCAC, our Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee, that is, that's great for that. But we also said that we have to take on those decision points. In other words, there's going to be decision points that aren't going to go to a Citizens' Advisory Committee, because they need to go, we need to keep on track with the schedule. So for the, for John and your comments, I appreciate that. I would, I would say that it seems as though there's an agreement to move forward with this contract, and I would, and I would support that. And I appreciate the way it's laid out and what we budgeted for this year, and how it's going to be within the budget that we've allocated for this year. But as these types of questions arise, whether or not we're visiting a Citizens Advisory Committee or getting the further financial analysis, it's incumbent upon us to do that extra work as council members with our staff to know that we can make the decision, and we have to have that discussion. So I believe that's the decision and the choice that we made as a council, understanding we want to be able to, to make the best decisions we can. We do want to consider, continue to utilize our Citizens Advisory Committee in the way we can, but there are going to be decision points where it's just up to council, and ultimately it is, whether or not it goes through them or goes directly to us. So I would say that we need to be able to, if we made that commitment a couple of weeks ago, which I believe we did, we need to stick with that. So, sorry if I was on a little bit of a soapbox, but maybe that was a reply to Matt's comment about being so old. But, but anyway, sorry, we tried to get a little bit of levity in there, you know, not to discount the seriousness involved, folks. It is serious, and the sensitivity and thoughtfulness involved in moving this project along in the best way we can, I think, is part of this process tonight. I'm Scott.
Just wanted to add something. Councilman Heding raised a really excellent point. I think you all have been extremely patient, as has the community, and kind of waiting for this new team to assemble, and the request for information kind of put on hold. Very critical information to help you and your decision-making, for the public to understand the true costs of what we spent to date and what we're looking at moving forward. Jen and I are fully committed to making this a top priority. I can't promise you exactly what that shape that'll take, but it's going to happen very soon. Maybe an informational item or an agendized item as soon as possible. So that's our commitment to you. We've heard it loud and clear. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks. Yep, yeah, go ahead.
And thank you for that, Scott. I appreciate that, and I preface my comments by the realization that we have two new staff members that have been here days, and my expectation was that they weren't going to come with that tonight, so there's no blame to lay there whatsoever. So, given the fact that we're really not far apart, because I agree with the need for the project, my issue and my discomfort will always be not knowing financially where we are as a city. However, Mr. Pundon, I have a question for you. This contract, does this have the usual with or without clause, 30-day?
I don't remember what the number of days is, but it does have a with or without.
With or without? So that makes me comfortable. I could feel comfortable approving this tonight, knowing the fact that if I get a budget document in four weeks that is way out of whack, that this councilman will be moving to rescind that contract and make some adjustments in that quickly. So with that caveat, and with that explanation with regard to our usual, for the public's benefit, most of our contracts, or all of our contracts, I believe, allow for us to get out of them without any cause whatsoever with a 30-day notice. That means if I'm uncomfortable, and we're all uncomfortable, or at least three of us are uncomfortable, we can do that. I would feel comfortable supporting it. With a date certain on when we might be able to get the budget update? If you think Mr. Collins, that four weeks would be a reasonable time?
Yeah, we'll make the December meeting.
Cool. Then with that...
And I would just, you know, thank you, I appreciate that. You know, I, pardon me, I just want to make sure that we're setting realistic expectations, and we're not overcommitting ourselves, and I just, you know, I'm just trying to be cognizant of that as we go through this, is my, my response to the expectation, the response I just got from Scott. Okay? All right. Thanks. Anything else for comments?
No, I was going to make a motion.
That'd be great. Marlese, thanks.
Okay. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the amount of $1,353,574, with a 10% contingency for a total authorization of $1,488,931 to Water Works Engineers.
Second. Leave that motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion?
Could we consider a friendly amendment to include the provision of a budget update also within four weeks?
Could we make that as a separate motion?
Sure can.
Sure.
I'll let you do that, since you made the original.
Okay, so...
Well, should we vote on the...
Yeah, let's vote on the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, let's vote on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Any additional motions?
Sure. I'll go ahead and do it then. I would move that we have staff prepare a budget update for the next regular council meeting, which I believe is four weeks from now, or December the...
14th.
14th.
Or 12th?
12th.
12th.
December the 12th, to include a full budget update on the traditional format for WRF spending to date.
We have a motion by Mr.
Is that a consent item, or you want it to be a discussion item?
It should be a discussion item. I'm recommending it be a discussion item. We haven't talked about it.
We have a motion.
I second.
So a motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Did you get the motion, Dana?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries, 5-0. Any additional discussion on this item or motions?
Thank you, Mr. Leibig, for very complete information. I know there is a tremendous amount of moving parts.
Yes.
No pun intended, but I do appreciate the work that you and staff do with regard to that. Thanks.
And I can give council a little flavor on where we are in this year's budget as far as our project goes, not as in-depth as Jen will, but council approved... Not as in-depth as Jen will, but council approved $4,48,304.38 in this year's budget for the project. We have spent $213,199.62, about 5% of the budget. Most of that was revisiting site analysis is what we've done that on. We're going to have a difficult time probably spending, given how much time we have, and even with the accelerated budget, because there's some design-build features in there, getting to that amount before the end of this fiscal year. So I'm, at this point in time, given one sheet of paper, fairly certain that we'll, 99.9% certain, we'll stay within our budget amount. I'll say 100% certain.
There we go. It's on record. So that concludes Item C2. Moving on to council declaration of future agenda items. I have just a, I have a question. So I know in the public comment, and we've had this, and part of the public comment earlier was about our financial reporting, and I know that's going to be coming back to us as well. So I feel as though that's going to come back staff-driven. It doesn't necessarily need to be a future agenda item? Can I, is that, that's the way I feel, that's the response I think we've got out of that. I just want to be, be sure we're there.
Right. And I think we're, we're talking about January for that.
Okay, all right. I just want to acknowledge, I know there's a request to agendize it. I know we've addressed saying, hey, we understand. We're going to bring this back. So, you know, without saying I want a future agenda item, we just confirmed that we plan on bringing this back in January.
Definitely.
Okay, great. Thanks. Anything else?
Yeah, I would, I was just looking at the note, if I could find it. She had four items that we're on. Agendize, okay. Copy of the report attached monthly to the agenda. Amend the city ordinance on finance. So it'd be that and then...
I think we can cover all those items and have that as a discussion item. Is that correct?
Yeah, we took good notes.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Anything else? Okay. I guess with that, our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, December 12, 2016 at 6:00 p.m. So in between all that time, hopefully everybody has a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see everybody back in December. Thanks.